Commissioner's Court, May the 22nd, 2007. It is now 5:34 PM. As we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation followed by the pledges to the Texas flag and the US flag. We have Pastor Andres Lewis.
Let us pray. Dear Father in Heaven, Creator of all things seen and unseen, who sent His Son into the world that man might know the truth about sin and salvation. We've come before you tonight acknowledging your majesty and our need for your wisdom and grace in the management and rule of Cameron County. Tonight, we ask that your grace would be upon our county judge and these commissioners, that they may truly discern the needs of this county, having the discernment to know its best interests and the courage to apply that understanding without fear or favor. We ask that those presenting reports in this chamber would do so in the spirit and truth, knowing that we must all report to you at the appointed time. We pray that those presenting their petitions before this court would do so without fear, knowing that you honor the honorable and set aside the despicable. At the end of the day, when all has been said and done, and all the votes have been taken, we pray that the affairs of this county may have been promoted with such honor that your blessing and favor would rest upon this court and the people of Cameron County. All this we ask in the name of, above all, the name of the one who saves us from ourselves, in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Judge Sally Gonzalez to use in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the flag, I pledge allegiance to the integrity of this law and individual.
Thank you. We have one individual that signed up for public comment, William Robert Jacobs. Please.
My name's William Robert Jacobs. I'm a new resident of Brownsville. I moved here in October, and I'm trying to get involved in the community as best I can. I read in the paper about what happened last week, and I'm concerned that this one contract on the delinquent taxes, that you didn't accept the commission, the committee's recommendation, and I just wonder why. It seems to be confusing, so I hope that during this meeting, that the issues and the questions will become public, because I feel it's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Everything having to do with this particular contract, which is towards the end of the agenda, will be discussed in open session. At that point, any member from the public can ask whatever question, and we can respond accordingly. All right? Thank you. Presentation resolution items. Consideration adoption of a resolution opposing the construction of a fence along the international boundary between the United States and Mexico. This was placed on again just to give all members the opportunity to sign the resolution. It's identical to the one from last week, so don't we just hear another acknowledgement? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries.
Judge, do you want to do the supplemental agenda? We've got a presentation.
Yeah. The presentation proclamation declaring the month of May 2007 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Cameron County, Texas. Ms. Santana's here, and somebody else is here, right? These are identical proclamations, but there's two different groups who will be conveying this. As of now, I do not read the whole proclamation. It is a long proclamation, as you can see. We have a very excited audience in a long meeting today. So just be it resolved that on the 16th day of May 2007, the Cameron County Commissioners' Court convened in special session upon the request of the Cameron County Commissioners, the following items were placed on the agenda. Consideration adoption of a proclamation declaring the month of May 2007 is Mental Health Awareness Month in Cameron County. Whereas mental illness are the most prevalent problem in America today, more common than cancer, lung, and heart disease combined, and early detection, diagnosis, and treatment of mental health problems greatly increase the likelihood of restores health, and caring for your mind as well as your body is good for your overall health and is a key to success at home, at work, and at school. These same mental health professionals and their advocate partners are finding ways to increase access to treatment and support services, and Cameron County has made a commitment to assist in bringing the facts concerning mental health issues to the attention of our residents. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Cameron County Commissioners' Court hereby declares the month of May 2007 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Tropical, that's right.
On behalf of the Rio Grande State Center South Texas Healthcare System located in Harlingen, we are excited to accept this as Mental Health Awareness Month. It is so important, but please know that we are there in case you have any kind of need for us, we will be there happily to help serve you.
My name is Jaime Flores. I'm the Director of Mental Health Services at the Rio Grande State Center South Texas Healthcare Systems. We really thank you all for the proclamation. It speaks volumes for people with mental illness who sometimes find it hard to find their voice. Thank you.
I'm Rosie Calazos, and volunteer board for the Rio Grande State Center, and we really, really appreciate the resolution that was given to us by the commissioners and the county judge, and thank you very much.
Before we go into the next agenda item, I'd like to make a comment or two about the mental health issues that we have in Cameron County. Obviously, we're all aware of the problems we have with psychiatric care that would attend to private pay and insurance pay. We have only one and a half, because one is now practicing part-time, that's open offices to be able to take anyone who, a patient that might need some type of services from a psychiatrist. So for the last couple of months, the county has had a committee put together, which these agencies are a big part of and participating in extremely well, and I appreciate that, in the effort to not only try to attract additional psychiatrists to our area, but also in an effort to get the information out. We've got four committees formed, we've had lots of committee meetings, we've had two general meetings. It seems to be going well. We are seeing some differences in the community, and we're just in the infancy, really, of getting the committee going and working, but the plans and the committees, subcommittees are working extremely well, and we do have a real great push going on to attract additional psychiatrists to our area, to Cameron County specifically. By standards, we should have 14 to 16 psychiatrists in Cameron County alone, and having one and a half or one and a part-time just does not accommodate the needs we have. So it's not going unnoticed. I think Mental Health Month is a perfect time to be, for everyone, to get informed about what the needs are and to seek the services that they need when they need them. We're trying to help that out. Thank you, Commissioner. I will tell you, Commissioner Wood is spearheading that committee, and he's doing a great job of it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, if I may interrupt? Could we move Agenda Item 21 to the next agenda item?
After the consent? Do you want to do it now?
No. If it's okay with the rest of the...
Any problem, anybody? Item 21, discussion and possible action regarding the additional lettering at courtroom at the Harlingen Annex Building.
Our Honorable JP is here.
Good afternoon, Honorable Judge and Commissioners. I had approached the engineer in the office of our new office to be here. We're scheduled to move in sometime in July, middle part of July, early part of August. In 1996, our courtroom where we have been sitting at or working out of, at least I've been there 32 years, was dedicated to, in the name of the Honorable Judge Leo Longoria, who happened to be my boss for 17 years. And I'm asking the commission to allow us to continue with the name in the new building and put a signage in the entrance of the courtroom, dedicating this courtroom in the Honorable Judge Leo Longoria's name. I thought it had already been okay, but apparently it was to be brought back to the commission, and that is why I'm here this afternoon. And besides that, I want to go see American Idol.
The Spurs.
Oh, the Spurs. Sorry.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I saw move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza, and the motion is to add the lettering honoring Judge Leo Longoria at the entranceway to the courtroom.
Right. It's not in memory, because this dedication was done when Judge Leo was still alive, so it's just basically a signage when people go into the courtroom that they understand that they're entering the Judge Leo Longoria courtroom.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, or any member of the audience would like to make a comment at this time?
The only other discussion, Judge, would be that there was an agenda item on our last week's agenda with a change order proposed for $545, and I would assume that by taking this action tonight, we would utilize that change order to take care of this, right?
That's fine. That's part of your motion.
Yeah.
All righty, we have a motion, a second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thanks. Consent items. Is there any item in the consent portion any member of the court would like to take out of order, or discuss in open session?
Three.
Five.
Ten.
Hold on, one at a time. Three. Let's go in numerical sequence. Three, out. I'm going to take four out. Five, out. How about six? Seven? Eight? I want to take out. Nine? Ten?
Ten.
Eleven? Twelve? Thirteen? Okay. On the travel items, anything on travel?
A.
Judge, did you include number nine or not?
No.
No, because I didn't hear anybody say anything. You want to take that one out and discuss separately?
No, I just wanted to double check.
Okay.
A.
On travel items is A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P? No, that's it. All right. Anything further? Do I hear motion to approve the consent items with the exceptions of Items 3, 4, 5, 8, 10, and all travel items with the exception 14A? Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. That was you?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Ganza. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning management and purchase issued with the International Bridge System on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disleyary Rules of Professional Conduct, the State Bar of Texas, 30 Conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Item B, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning Javier Alejandro Ganza versus the United States Marshals Service, the Cameron County Sheriff's Department, Cosme Martinez, Michael David Saavedra, Sergeant Jose Alejandro Garcia, John Roy Harris, Jose Ibarra, and Letitia Andrade individually and in their official capacities, Case Number 07-CV-52, for discussion and authority to represent the county pursuant to Code Section Confer with Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning Ruel Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez versus Cameron County, Texas, and Jesus Villanueva individually in his official capacity, Civil Action Number 05-278, for discussion of status of case and settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.0721A. Confer Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning an equal employment opportunity Commission EEOC claim of Julia Castro for discussion and authority to represent Cameron County pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Confer Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning a claim of Kaufman for discussion of status of case and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. Confer Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning Olga Ortega versus Cameron County Juvenile Probation Department, EEOC, Charge Number 451-2007-0021, for discussion of status of case and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and B. Item G, I have a question. This relates to conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning the HIDA contract including possible termination on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct, State Bar of Texas, conflict. My question is, why is...
Where's, where are they? They're going?
Go find Richard or one of them.
Richard signed it.
Just to find out how this particular item is to be discussed in executive session if it's regarding a contract. That's my only issue. Richard, just a quick question on Item G regarding the HIDA contract. The question that I have is, why are we discussing this in the executive session, not in an open session, if it involves a contract?
Because it's issues that could lead to litigation and involve suits for breach.
Who's breaching?
We're not going to breach it, but we could be accused of it. Basically, what you look at on item, when it's a 571, 071, A2 exemption, as a lawyer, what I have to look at is this an item that if I were in private practice, my client would be entitled to talk with me in confidence, and this is such an item.
All right.
Well, there's no named client there except for a contract.
There's what?
There is no named client here except for a contract. I know that in the six years that I've been here, every contract that we've had with this particular agency has been an open session item.
This is an item, though, on consideration of termination of the contract, not...
Termination of contracts?
Of contracts. There are a number of HIDA contracts. There's a HIDA contract, I don't know how many, but it's under a grant, and there's an issue concerning the contract that I believe needs to be discussed in executive session.
Still doesn't make sense to me, because every contract that we've approved with them is an open session item.
This isn't an approval.
No, every, which would make a HIDA contract a public instrument.
No, sir.
So all of the HIDA contracts are not public instruments.
The contract itself is, but what we're going to discuss is not.
All right.
It's the action that's going to be taken that makes the difference.
The action that will be taken will be in open session, for sure. There will be no action taken in executive session.
Okay. All right, let's go.
Move to go into open session.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo to come out of executive session.
Hold her in here.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning management and purchase issued with the International Bridge System. There was no discussion. Do I hear motion to table? Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Confer Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning representing Javier Alexander Ganza and others. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel and authorize the district attorney to represent Jose Ibarra and our civil division to represent Cameron County?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, D, and E, there was no discussion. Do I hear motion to table those items?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item F, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning Olga Ortega. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item G, conferred Commissioners' Court legal counsel concerning the HIDA contract. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of our district attorney and our civil division? Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. There are two items that have to do with elections that we do need to take out of order. Why Item 28, though, Pete? Why 28?
Those are both Roger's items, 28 and 29.
Okay, but 29 we can do, that's canvassing of the precinct election returns. The other one, do you want to go ahead and do him, too?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry?
He wants to leave.
Okay, Item 28, consideration action approving the maintenance contract with IBM for the InfoPrint Model 1145 DNI printer used for printing the voter registration listings, voter registration cards, and reports, all elections conducted by the county, elections voter registration office. Do I hear motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Ganza. Any discussion? Any discussion from any member of the audience? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. On 29, canvassing of precinct election returns for the special state constitutional amendment election conducted on May the 12th, 2007, in accordance with Chapter 67, canvassing elections, Section 67.002, canvas of precinct returns of the Texas Election Code.
Judge, Commissioners, what you have before you is the results of the election. This is a canvassing. The first couple of pages will give you results by precinct, and the following page is a summary report. If you compare those figures, they're all in the front pages, except that the front page has a precinct by precinct. And then you have, after that, you have precinct by precinct reports for each one of the precincts that reported that evening. Okay? Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Ganza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I still don't know why you want to take it out of order, Roger.
We've got the city of Brownsville that's canvassing tonight.
And you have to go over there, too?
And they're also, no, I'm not going over there. I want to be waiting for their order of the election, because we've got about, we've got this short week now, and we've got a short week next week, and we've got to have all our ballots, everything in order for early voting, and so we're going to, I'm going back to the office right now.
Okay, go Spurs. All right, under the consent items, we had, we had several items to pull out. Item 3, consideration approval to increase the salary of the bail bonds board administrative assistant to $20,000, as approved by the bail bond board. Commissioner Ganza, you want to pull that one out?
I don't have a problem with that. I think Mr. Rivera made the recommendation. My only question is, is it time to look at that fund balance and possibly transfer some of those monies to Rotten Bridge?
That can be discussed later on, Commissioner. I will bring it up to the bail bond board.
Would you please?
And see what other items need to be funded before we do that. We have a balance of about $156,000.
I know it is.
It's a two-person operation, and when the bail bond administrator is out, the administrator has to do almost the same thing that the administrator does, so we recommend it highly.
Okay? Well, one of my concerns was that the prior year fund balance was $150,000, and what's come in this year is nowhere close to that at all, right? And I'd like to see a report on that also.
At the next meeting, we'll bring a report to you, Commissioner.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Item number four, consideration approval of contract between Cameron County and Munoz Foundation drilling for the courthouse security wall. Pete, I pulled Item 4 out and Item 10 out, and my question is, on Item 4, are we making sure that the people that we hire to do this type of contract work are carrying workman's compensation insurance?
They're supposed to provide all the insurances for my, for our department to check to see if they're licensed in the state of Texas and if they have a good rating. The workers' comp we don't check because it's not mandatory. We just check the general liability insurance, and that's what we check.
Okay, I would ask the court to consider making workman's compensation a mandatory requirement. I won't go into details, but we had a situation where somebody got injured on the job on a contract that we awarded. It appears that there's no workman's comp, and the person that was hired to do the work is hurt, and the employer cannot provide anything for him. So I may bring that back in a couple of weeks to consider doing that. The other issue, do we make any determination as what the minimum living wage is that some of these contractors are paying their employees? We may want to discuss that at some future date and see if we want to start requiring people that do business with the county to pay a minimum wage, similar to what we're trying to do at our county, and see if they're going to do the same thing.
Judge, the contracts that involve grants as the funding source do require a wage rate, and it's usually attached, so we could probably check and see how those rates...
And apply it at all. Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, as far as Item Number 4 goes, the contractor does carry workman's compensation.
Okay.
So it's not part of the form of the agreement, but they do carry it?
Yes, I have a...
You have the documentation, do you not?
Pardon me?
You have the documentation showing that they do.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I do.
And I guess, and that's fine, and that's what I wanted to know, but my question is in the future, when we start contracting with folks, we need to make sure that there is workman's comp available, okay?
Okay.
That's part of the, part of the bid. Okay, do I hear motion on Number 4? Moved by Commissioner Ganza.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 5, consideration authorization for preliminary plat approval for J and V subdivision, precinct number 4, being the south five acres of the north, 14.72 acres of Block 85, Adams Garden subdivision B.
I ask that this be pulled out, Judge, realizing it's a very, very small subdivision of two lots, but noticing that the water provider's Harlingen Water Works system. Do we have the agreement with them, or have these folks paid their impact fees to Harlingen Water Works? Do we know what that status is?
Good evening, Judge and Commissioners. We did ask that question of the developer, even though we're still in the preliminary stage, and it's our indication that the developer will pay for all the, well, tap fees and impact fees, the whole requirement of the water for water service connection. So it's our understanding that he is going to pay for all those services.
So by the time we have a final approval come back to us, we'll know for sure.
That's correct, sir. Unless something else changes, but at this time, it should be in order. Thank you.
All of that is on the plat, is it not? I mean, all of that is documented?
Yes, except in the preliminary. In the preliminary, just an indication of what the developer is going to do with the subdivision, and submits the preliminary information. We review it, but before final plat approval is done, that's where we start looking at the 30-year agreements and the service agreements with the developer.
I would hope during the preliminary process, we're telling these developers that they're going to have to have those things when we get ready to look at a final...
Yes, sir. And I think we're going to start doing that so we know upfront if there's going to be an issue or not.
So they know upfront where they're at.
Yes, sir.
What they have to do.
Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consideration authorization to purchase cellphone for the Indigent Fence Coordinator. My question was the funding. It was not identified on the agenda packet, Pete? Or if it was, I didn't see it.
No. That's his budget, signed off.
Yeah, the department fund number is 104351, and the account code is 6047.
So it's within there?
Yes.
And they're fine?
Yes.
All right. Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 10, consideration authorization to execute contract and change order number one with Zimmerman Construction for Isla Blanca Park Development. Did I pull that one, or did you pull that one? David?[1797.26]
You pulled it.
I think the same question, item number four, the workman's comp issue and all that stuff, okay? Is that all right? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item A, item carries. Item A, travel items. Civil Division staff two to travel to South Padrae in Texas on 6/27, 6/29 to attend the Momentum 2007, a governmental purchasing seminar. Commissioner, that was yours.
My question is, you know, nowhere on the documentation do they have CE's for legal? They have continuing education credits for, what is that? Institute of Supply Management, Texas State Board of Accountability, Accountants, I guess? Association of Governmental Purchasing Agents? I mean, I can see why you would want to go there to get information, but I don't see how you could do it for CE's because they're not listed on there.
You're correct, there's no CLE credit force.
CLE.
But the information is there for us. We do, we have to continually, W and I advise both this board and the purchasing department concerning purchasing issues, and the very people who frequently I talk with, such as Pamela Perkins, who's with Attorney General's Office, will be lecturing at that, at that convention, and I think it'll be very useful. We're not asking for either a hotel or travel to and from, just for fees to pay for the, for the course.
Okay. That's the only question I have. All right, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 17, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge and Commissioners, there were no salary schedules, just line item transfers that were included in your packet. Transfers between individual line items within the departments, other than transferring communications from the Dancy Building to the individual departments that are located within the facility.
Do I hear a motion? Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 18, approval of minutes for March the 27th, 2007, and April 3rd, 2007. Do I hear a motion to approve any of those minutes?
I'm ready. Motion for approval?
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 19, approval of claims.
I have my lawyer's list applied. Think they were running one, two, eight, one, ten, or twelve operations. We want that, I can point you some.
Voided from the list?
Yes.
All right. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve all claims, with the exception of the warrant that Mr. Yates just told us about?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note my abstention on warrant number to Harlingen Water Works and Commissioner Gatzza's abstention on one to the medicine shop. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 20, discussion possible action on temporary contract negotiations regarding the performance of autopsies for Cameron County?
No report, the person got busy.
Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 22, consideration approval interlocal cooperation agreement for tax assessment collection for Brownsville Independent School District. Tony, you want to address that real quick, or?
Judge, Commissioners, the last couple of weeks, we've met with the DIC staff superintendent, business managers, CFOs, and we came up with a, with an agreement. Finally, we came up with, with an agreement to do their tax collections starting July 1st of this year. So I think you all have a copy of the, of the agreement. Richard should have a copy of the signed agreement. If not, we should, after you, it's approved, we should have one signed tomorrow.
I've been advised that the superintendent has approved the agreement, but they did not give me the signed copies yet, but we'll, but it is exactly in the form that is attached.
Tony, is the fee we're going to be charging comparable to what we're charging the other entities we're collecting for?
No sir, Mark and I are going to get together sometime in the next couple of weeks to do some adjustments on some other, on the other taxing entities. But we will be doing adjustments.
I would think that, you know, the others we're collecting for are probably going to be looking for a very similar fee. I understand, you know, our fees are based on what our actual costs are for doing the collection.
Exactly, exactly. But we'll be looking at that Commissioner, very closely.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
The fees the other entities are being charged are 1% now, right?
Yes sir.
And this is 0.04%?
Exactly.
Okay. So it's a little less than half?
Yes sir.
So we could possibly see the other entities seeing a similar savings?
We're going to, between Mark and I, we're going to be getting together and, and making some adjustments.
Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatzza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 23, discussion possible action regarding the upper payment limit option for the Indigen Healthcare Funds. Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Judge, with the provisions that, that they continue exploring it as we discuss.
That's discussed in the workshop. Item carries. Item 24, consideration authorization to release, to release the 2007 tobacco settlement proceeds of $423,344.11 to the Rio Grande Valley Health Services District?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gatzza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 25, consideration discussion for retention of administration by present administrator life ray insurance company or request proposals for internal revenue code 125 Cafeteria Plant Administration for October 1st, 2007 through September 30th, 2008. Mr. Viatia?
Yes, this, this contract expires on, on September 30th, and, and so this, there's plenty of time if you all want us to go back and, and go out for bids, or in the initial, last year's proposal, we, we recommended that they be prepared to go for a second year if there's no changes. And they have sent us a letter telling us that there's no changes on their existing contract for fees. So that's the reason I bring it up to you, so that you can give us direction for the, you want to retain this life ray, or you want us to go out for bids.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Viatia?
Well, there's no change on fees at all, and there's no going to be, if we go out for bids, the, the other proposer is going to want a startup fee and all that stuff. It's going to cost us more money. Right now, it's, it's at the same rate. It's been like that.
So you're recommending we continue?
I recommend we continue, yes.
Are there the option to go out for one more year?
Yes, we have to, because it's just a one-year extension allowed by the.
You know, I, I'd prefer that we go out for proposals. I mean, I just don't want to get into the habit of extending contracts year after year after year because there's no fee in the change, there's no change in the fee. So I was one would, would like to see that we go out for proposals, and if they give us the best bid, we, we stay with them. If they don't, then we don't. That'd be my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of the court feels.
Fine with me.
I move we extend the contract one year.
And I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Gatzza, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to extend for one year the contract with Life Ray Insurance Company.
That's in accordance with the option in the contract we have with the. In accordance with the option, yes sir.
Judge, Commissioners, real quick, I got this today, and I was reviewing it pretty quickly this afternoon. There is one or two things that I'd like to have changed. So if you would.
Do you want to make it subject to legal approval, Commissioners?
That's right, it is, because we have a, a privacy person in charge that is Remy Gatzza, and we need to add a new name to that. And there's another concern that, that W has, but I, I've presented it to her. We can come back with a contract for approval at a later date.
My motion is subject to legal.
Okay. Okay, is that your second, Commissioner Tamayo?
Yes, my second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Name. Item carries. Item 26, consideration authorization of a public hearing for the purpose of discontinuing and abandoning a portion of Kansas City Road. The road is located in precinct number four, and said road is a publicly dedicated road shown in map of Hooks and Hodges subdivision recorded in volume five, page 10, of the map records of Cameron County, Texas.
Motion to go into public hearing?
Do I hear a motion? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatzza. We are now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this?
Judge and Commissioners, they have, the petitioners have followed the procedures that the county has, that we, they submitted their petition, we went through the publication, and now we're in the public hearing.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this agenda item? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides, to close public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 27, consideration authorization to adopt an order for the purpose of discontinuing and abandoning a portion of Kansas City Road. The road is located in precinct number four, and said road is a publicly dedicated road shown in map of Hooks and Hodges subdivision recorded in volume five, page 10, of the map records of Cameron County, Texas. Do I hear a motion to adopt the order?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Judge, I'd like to compliment the engineering department, as well as the staff in my office, for spending a lot of time on this issue, and I'm glad that it's finally resolved.
Thank you Commissioner. Item 30, consideration approval of scope and fee with Aguirre Corporation for the repairs of the Carrizales Rucker Facility.
Judge and Commissioners, I handed out a proposed scope to you all. We had different repairs categorized into different categories. We have with us this evening, three gentlemen from Aguirre Corporation. We have Mr. Pedro Aguirre, and Mr. Gary Roden, and Mr. Frosty Gardner. They will give the court a detailed explanation of the repairs that are required at Carrizales Rucker to bring the facility to compliance with the Commission on Jail Standards. We've also met with Sheriff Lucio, and we went in detail over the proposed scope that Aguirre has presented to us. The sheriff does have some, some suggestions that he would like to present to Aguirre. The sheriff feels that there might be some items that we can approach differently, and they would turn out to be savings to the county. So what I'd like to do tonight is allow Aguirre the opportunity to explain to the court what exactly they are proposing to do on the repairs, and then maybe table the items so that we can meet with the sheriff next week, and then come back with a revised proposal to Commissioner's Court. So this time, I'll turn it over to, to Aguirre.
Judge and Commissioners, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Frosty Gardner with the Aguirre Corporation. We have been, under direction from the court, discussing the needed repairs at the, at the jail with Mr. Sepulveda and his office. We have been asked to evaluate all the items and develop a list of the most needed items that could also be completed for a total cost of $13.5 million to the county, total cost to county. What we have done is, and these would be, these would be considered phase one of the repairs that are, that would be carried out. There would be a future list of, of items, or some of those items that could be carried out by county maintenance, different possibilities, and some of those which we will discuss with the sheriff. What we did was take the, the most needed items and divide them up into those items that pertain to security, that is, keeping the inmates in place, those that are, that will be necessary and required by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, primarily the security walls that the contractor did not construct properly, some repairs in that area, and some closed-circuit television cameras that would allow the supervisory personnel to view all areas, all inmate areas. That is not possible now, and it is a requirement that that, that that be available to the supervisory people. So the security items titled, total 3.44 million. And then items pertaining to the health and safety, this has to do with a lack of ventilation, some problems, mold that have developed over a period of time, air conditioning problems that are related to both of those issues, and the necessary repairs to the, to the roof, the roof leaks in a number of places, all of which total 7.2, 7.22 million dollars. And then we have recommended a contingency that, that you retain a, a contingent, contingency, since we are working in an existing area. And, and we also have put in an amount of money for the remediation of any mold. There are a number of items in the, in the jail that, that do have mold. And in order to accomplish the work and do it in the existing jail with prisoners still in the jail, we have recommended, and I think it's been fairly well agreed, that the work would be done basically one-sixth of the jail at a time. In order to do that, the area that would be the work area needs to be barricaded off, made sure that it is not accessible in any way to any inmates, because there'd be construction materials and, and so forth in that area. And, and so we have included the monies in the estimate to be able to construct those barricades and to move them as you go from one part of the jail to the other. These items, in our analysis, are those items that are the most needed items and would, and would be the most beneficial to you to, to have them in phase one. And I'd like to answer any questions that you have.
Would those items bring the jail to a maximum facility compliance?
Yeah, it would bring the jail to the standards that it was originally intended to have, yes sir.
Okay. How much opportunity have you had to visit with the sheriff? Mr. Sepulveda said that he wants to go over this and, and I guess, visit with you some more about it to see what might be able to be looked at maybe a little closer?
Yeah, we have, we have had extensive conversations with the sheriff and, and his people. It is my understanding that after we submitted this list, that he's had some additional thoughts since then, and that we need to, we need to discuss those.
And Commissioner Gatzza asked about the status of the jail as being a maximum security compliant, once these were, were completed. Is there some possibility, working with obviously the Jail Standards Commission, Mr. Sepulveda, I guess maybe I should be asking you, as to, as opposed to going to a maximum security facility under the jail standards, to go into a, a repair position that would put us into a minimum security and look about, look at possibly adding additional beds in a maximum security at new construction, or putting them someplace else?
We, we have looked at those items that, these, these security items would apply pretty much across the board, regardless of the level of security. much across the board regardless of the level of security. I mean, the jail was originally constructed pretty much as a maximum security facility, and the security items here are those that are required to bring the jail to where it was originally intended to be, and correct those items that, that under the original construction were not correct. As to scaling it back, in direct answer to your question, is, into scaling it back, there might be a couple of items on here that could be eliminated, but the big number would have to be done regardless of the level of security. That primary security walls, that has to be done. That doesn't, they don't meet any level of standard at this time. And then the rest of the items under health and safety that we have listed there have no bearing necessarily on security level. They have to do with, as I said, the ventilation and the mold and correct air conditioning so that it is a more livable environment for both the inmates and the staff.
Well, I guess one of them that I'm looking at on the, on the health and safety items is replace moldy ceilings and non-secure ceilings. And I realize the way it was constructed on the second level, as the inmates go up to the second level, the mezzanine level, I guess is what they call it, that the ceilings are hardened to a point just outside the guardrails or the handrails that keeps them from falling off sometimes. But beyond that, it's just push-out ceilings.
Right.
And I guess I'm asking if that's not something that would be required to harden the entire ceiling, and I'm not sure that's what you're talking about, replacing the non-secure ceilings, are you talking about hardening the entire ceilings?
No.
Okay.
We're talking about, you see, those push-out ceilings, lift-out ceilings, as you call them, are fairly absorbent material, and over a period of time, a large percentage of that has gotten wet and from roof leaks and air conditioning problems and so forth.
Condensation.
And is moldy, and a good portion of that needs to be repaired and replaced. In addition, the hardened ceilings are not as extensive as they should be. So we have kind of lumped those two together, and I'm not sure, well, what we did was not say, okay, it'll cost so much for this part and so much for that part, but since we would be doing a pretty big ceiling replacement job, say, okay, what would it cost to do this ceiling? So it's all kind of in that same category.
If I understand you correctly, then you're talking about extending maybe in certain areas, the hardened area of the ceiling, and leaving some of the push-out tiles in the balance.
Yes, sir. Right now, the, with the railing at the mezzanine level, it is possible for a prisoner to extend their body, I mean, a little bit over there, and reach the lift-out ceiling part. That's not supposed to happen.
Right, it shouldn't be that way.
It's supposed to be a hardened ceiling for as far as they can reach. So that, that part would be strictly replacement. And that's, I'm working from memory, and, but I'm pretty sure that is a requirement at any level of security. Because prisoners getting up into the ceiling space is just not a good idea at any level.
Mr. Gardner, in the replacement or repairing of air conditioning option, it seems that the only option you presented us was the chill water system.
Right, this is not the chill water system. This is less in cost than the chill water system. We presented in the, in the, in the report, we presented four options, and this is the second option. The advantage of this one over the, over the one that's a little bit less expensive is that we would downsize, we would provide new rooftop units. They would be downsized from the five-ton units that are there to three tons, which are much more appropriate, and they would have the coated condenser coils which, and parts, exposed parts, that would be a whole lot more suitable for the coastal environment in which they exist than the kind of off-the-shelf equipment that's there now and is beginning to show some deterioration. But there were, the next step would have been the chill water, and it was an addition of more, more dollars than we could fit into the assigned amount that Mr. Sepulveda said, don't go over this.
Is there any salvage value to the ones that are there currently? I know you just said that they're getting to need some things, but they've been there five, six years before I got here, I know, one or two years.
You know, I think they would have some salvage value. I don't quite know how to estimate that, but, you know, if you, we would have, we would have to.
And I'm not necessarily saying, you know, we could sell them for salvage value as to more of what they would be worth, but perhaps the county could use them in some other areas for a period of time that would hold up for five or six years more.
Sure, I think that's very possible. And used in the right application, they would certainly work a lot better than they do out there. But, and there's nothing wrong with the piece of equipment if applied correctly. It would cost a little extra to have the contractor treat them gently enough when they removed them that they could be reused, but certainly you would, you could receive value for that, over and above that additional cost. I mean, I would think there would be some salvage value there. Yes, sir.
And this does not include the sheriff's office?
No, ma'am.
Any further questions?
If this project were to be undertaken, what kind of timeline would we be looking at from execution of contract to final product?
To final price?
No, no.
Product.
Finished job, okay?
Finished job, okay. I believe we had looked at a sixty-four-week construction period. And this mean, I mean, and I know that sounds like a long time, but remember, we would be doing this in six repetitive steps. Each one would be taking something in the order of six to eight weeks to complete. And then prior to that, we would have the design time probably three months, and then another month to bid. And I don't know how long it would take you to contract for that, but that's not an instantaneous process either. Some of that can be mitigated by pre-purchase of equipment. I mean, we can do some, there can be some things that can be expedited, but the work that has to take place inside the building and is going to be done one sequence at a time is what stretches the thing out. If you could move the prisoner somewhere and let the contractor get in there and do all the work at once, it would cost less money and it would be done quickly. But we don't have that option.
Yeah, at the current occupation or occupancy, occupancy out there, it's going to be tough to move one pod, you know.
Yes, sir.
I know we can do it.
Good high.
Good high occupancy, most hotels would like to have that. The money comes the other direction though, too.
The last time that, I think Mr. Aguirre made a presentation, he gave us two prices. One was if the inmates were out versus the inmates being in. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a different consideration.
Two different, okay. Now, which one is this consideration?
Inmates are in.
Inmates are in, okay.
Except for the pods that are working on it.
For the one-six area.
Right, right. Hundred and forty-four at a time, at least in the first four, hundred and forty-four at a time would be displaced somewhere. And that is the area that we can work in. That's an area that can be isolated, it's an area that is a supervisory area, it would have the minimum impact and give the contractor as much opportunity to work on a major piece at a time as can be worked out. I mean, we just, to go to two-hundred-and-eighty-eight at a time would cut the time in half, but it, it's just a very difficult thing for the sheriff's department to work with that quantity.
That jail was built as a maximum security jail. There was litigation involved where the county sued and prevailed, and out of the twenty-one million dollars, I think we ended up with about twelve, thirteen?
Thirteen and a half.
Something like that, million dollars.
Thirteen and a half.
I believe that we need to put the money back and fix that jail. Worry about the additional pods some other time. We need to fix that jail. I think that's what we sued for, that's what we won for, and I think that's what we need to be doing.
I don't think you have a problem.
Okay, no problem, right? And I think incorporate the sheriff's ideas, I think he said he could do everything for about a million dollars at some point, but I think we have to go back and entertain his thoughts and maybe we can save some money here and there. But again, I don't think any member of the court wants to jeopardize the integrity of that jail. It's already been done once when it got constructed, and we need to do it right the second time. All right? Anything further?
The only other comment I wish to make is that we need to make sure that our sheriff is involved in the process from the get-go. He needs to be part of the meeting process, of the timeline process, of what will be worked on, because he is one most directly impacted by what we're doing.
We could not agree more. That is absolutely the case. We have a, I think we have a good communications relationship with the sheriff and his staff. We, I mean, having experience working in a number of jails, we understand that the sheriff in the end has to be the person responsible for the operation.
And he's the one that has to live with it and work with it and see that his responsibilities are carried out appropriately, that's part of it.
And, you know, my intuition tells me that he will have some suggestions even beyond those that we might discuss in the next few days, and as we make those adjustments, we will adjust the cost, or possibly if there are savings, we can add something else that he might feel is necessary. We would, we would appreciate the opportunity to get going and fix the jail. We have been working with the county now for almost two years on, first, the report and then the legal issues and recovering the money, and now we're ready to get going.
Let me ask one more question, Commissioner Garza. You are also recommending that we have a construction manager at risk for this project. That's part of your recommendation?
We think that's a really good idea.
That's not funded anywhere in what you have here?
No, sir, that's, well, it is, that's part of the construction.
That's part of the contract.
Part?
That's what I understood, or did I?
It's part of what?
It's not part of our contract, but it's part of the dollars that you would end up spending.
Okay, so it would be part of what we have on this budget pretty much then?
Yes, sir.
And what's your reasoning for that?
The reason for that is that as we develop the drawings, as we work with the sheriff to develop the sequence of construction, as we choose the methodology to get A done and B done, having an actual construction manager at risk, that is, who's?
Did you define that for me?
Construction manager at risk develops, and Mr. Roden might want to step in here, a construction manager who is at risk will, will work with us on the drawings, you know, on the plans and specifications, to develop systems that are constructible and economical, and then at some point in that process will say to you, this is how much it's going to cost you, and I will see to it that it doesn't cost any more than that. So they are at risk for that price.
For anything over that amount?
You bet. If they don't do it.
What's your?
Go ahead.
I thought that would be part of your role? No?
No.
You don't do construction manager at risk jobs?
We, we have not proposed that. What we have proposed here is that we will provide the design.
And the construction administration.
And the construction administration, right. We will produce the drawings, and we'll make sure, we'll come to the job site on a very regular basis and make sure that the contractor does it according to the drawings.
Well, I think it shows here twice a month, that's what you said.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Now, getting back to your, what did you call him? Contractor at risk?
Construction manager at risk.
Construction manager at risk, I'm going to write that down, because that's the person that will hold accountable.
For the dollars.
To make, pardon?
For the dollars.
That's right, okay. I'm just getting things straight.
You know, part of our responsibility is to, is to make sure that the, that the sheriff is in concert with everything that we do, but also that the Texas Commission on Jail Standards is approving the drawings that we, that we produce, so that if it's built according to those drawings, then the jail's certified. We have responsibility for all of the content.
Do you have any idea how much money we're talking about, when we're talking about going out for bids for somebody to handle something like this, a cost?
Four percent.
Yeah. I think that three to four percent of the, of the, of the cost of the work is what the contract, what a construction manager would, would charge. And we, you know, and in turn, they bid out a lot of the work as subcontract, and so they, they really get part of that money from what would end up being a general contractor's fee on a, on a more conventional design, bid, build process. It's a process that's being used by public entities around the state pretty successfully.
So then we would, we would RFP for a construction manager at risk?
Yes, sir.
And then we would not have bids for the construction of the project? He would take that on?
He would bid all of the, well, he would bid all of the subcontracts, and savings could accrue to you.
Okay, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't per se, we wouldn't per se go out for bids for the big project? We would RFP for a construction manager?
Pretty much, that's correct, yeah.
And then he would do all that processing?
As opposed to a general contractor, we'd have this construction manager at risk?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think he has the answer.
Yeah, I'm Gary Roden with the Aguirre Corporation. I think the reason that we propose a construction manager as opposed to a general contractor on this type of project is as a design professional, it's pretty easy on a new construction-type project for us to say, we're putting in ex cubic yards of concrete and this much dry wall and this much steel and give you a pretty good budget. On a project like this where we're literally going in and applying materials to existing walls and ripping out portions of things and putting back portions of things, it's pretty difficult as we're designing to make sure that we're sticking to the budget. Where we've successfully used construction manager at risk is by bringing a contract, contractor onboard early in the design process, they work with us to make sure that we stay in budget. Typically, what you would do is an RFP to bring that contractor onboard based on his fees and his general conditions cost, so it's a competitive process. And then as you get to bidding out the work, then they would commit to it to what we call a G-max or guaranteed maximum price, and then they would, from there, manage it like a general contractor. Only reason we even suggested this was just due to the nature of this type of renovation work, it's pretty hard to get a handle on cost unless you've got a contractor working with you hand in hand.
Full-time.
I believe also that, that having a construction professional onboard during the design process may lead us to more buildable solutions, more orderly solutions, possibly save. process may lead us to more buildable solutions, more orderly solutions, possibly save money that way.
That answered my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm here, far away.
Anything else?
Pete, I want to have a question for Pete.
Yes, ma'am.
Could any of this work be done in-house?
We, that was a consideration in what we put into this budget versus what we considered to be done in another phase. A lot of the work that isn't in this list could be done in-house, or even by smaller local contractors directly, particularly the work on the outside of the building, which we did not include. There is possibly, and I think this might be what the Sheriff wants to talk about, possibly we might be able to do some of the work in-house. I don't know about the security work being done in-house. And then, of course, one of the big items is the roof, ductwork removal, some other things, that possibly could be. But certainly, when we looked at the complete list of items, and we said, we can't get all of these items onto the amount of money that Mr. Sepulveda is telling us that we need to get to, those items that could be done by the county staff, or even possibly be done by inmate labor, we said, okay, let's take those out and put them on this other list, because the county may be able to get that done also.
All right, anything else?
Well, my only comment is that, you know, the scope of work that is attached to, the information I got was dated September 7, 2005. And that was something that was attached there, not what we're going by, but...
Oh.
I don't want to wait till September 7 of 2009 to start this project. I think it's important that we move on it as quickly as possible, and that we get going on the project and make sure that that jail is brought back up to the standard it was built to be as soon as we can.
I think Commissioner Benavides' point is well-taken. Whatever we can do in-house, obviously, but at the same time, the more you do in-house, if something goes wrong, you have nobody to hold accountable in terms of, you know, potential errors and omissions or litigation. So just keep that in mind as we're discussing this construction manager.
There are a number of items on the exterior of the building, including some re-grading so that the water will drain away, that I think it would be fairly, that'd be a low risk to have that done in-house.
We have surveyors in-house that could survey and give us some topos, and we've got excellent equipment operators that could do things like that.
Yeah, and that's why we actually did not include those, trying to perceive which ones would be easy and which ones would be difficult for you to do in-house.
Are you going to come back in a week with the recommendation after you visit with the Sheriff, a couple of weeks? Pete?
We're going to try and meet with the Sheriff next week, and so I would say a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
But we'll try to negotiate the scope as soon as possible, but I would say a couple of weeks.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the scope and fee?
So who?
Well, we need to table.
Or do you want to table it?
Yeah, we'd like to table the items that we could...
We don't want to hold...
Well, but I think they have to come back and get with what the Sheriff has to do. And I also want to talk about the fee a little bit before we get ourselves locked into that, okay?
Well, why don't we talk about it right now?
Because I don't know what it's going to be. I saw a number on there, but that may change, subject to what the Sheriff comes up with.
Yeah, we need to come back with an amended scope, amended fees, amended cost system that's based on our meeting with the Sheriff.
Have to meet with Sheriff?
Yes.
Well, let's make sure we don't talk this thing to death. I mean, we need to get it going, and we need to...
I feel the same way. I think we need to narrow down.
Well, here's...
I mean, we've been waiting a long time for this to come up. We keep saying, next week, next week.
Okay, here's someone in the trenches. Let's hear from him.
If I may, just, if we do this in-house, and we move inmates, 144 inmates, that'll be about $37,000 a week to relocate these inmates. I don't know if that was taken into consideration or not.
Repeat that?
Well, we don't have a choice, though.
Well, I mean, I don't see it in the numbers anywhere, but if we do move one pod, there'll be 144 inmates, and around $40 a day, we're looking at almost $40,000 a week.
Look, if we waited this long, certainly two weeks, we're not going to make or break. But I think come back no later than two weeks, you know, with the different scope. And in between that, then we can negotiate the fee as well.
And we'll have a lot more input from the Sheriff, and Mike, from you, things like that, that...
But no later than two weeks come back, because I don't know if that number that Mike just told us about is in your calculation. Do you? Off the top of your head?
No, I mean, we were asked to put together a budget for construction items that was less than the 13 and a half million that was available. As far as operational issues associated with the moves, that's really outside of our expertise.
Okay, well, again, you know, Pete, I think we need to get, if you can, a total drive-out price on this thing, so what's it going to cost? So if you can do it by next Tuesday, which I doubt, if not, do it for the following
Move to table.
Pete, a lot of this softened your shoulders. Would a week be sufficient, or is it more than that?
The Sheriff is out for the rest of the week. We can start meeting with Mike tomorrow, but, you know, just to be on the safe side, you know, I'd rather have two weeks opposed to one week.
Well, can we move to approve the scope pending negotiations, so that at least, you know, we've moved forward?
You're taking the first step.
Taking a step to moving on with this project?
We're going to have to come back to this anyway.
I believe the Sheriff's only concern at this point is whether or not, if we do have to move the inmates, and we have to contract with somebody, it'd be around $40 a day, which would be almost a week.
So his concern is mainly, where's the money coming from when you move the inmates? Am I hearing you correctly?
Exactly. We didn't see that in the proposal at all.
Well, see, that's apples and oranges.
I can place the item on the agenda for next week, and if we're ready, you know, we can act on it. If not, we can table it.
I'm sorry, Pete, I wasn't listening to you.
We can place the item, I can place the item on the agenda again next week, and if, in between tomorrow and next Tuesday, we can agree on the final scope and fee with the Sheriff, you know, we can move forward on it next week.
Motion to table and bring it back?
Unfortunately, there's not an empty jail anywhere we can move everybody out to.
No. Okay. Commissioner Wood had made the original motion to table. Do I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo?
But I want, if I'm going to second, is that he'd come back next week.
Well, you said he'd put it on next week if he's ready. So, John, is that table for one week? Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 31, consideration of possible action regarding, thank you all, consideration of possible action regarding the county's legislative agenda for the 80th legislative session?
Judge, Commissioners, as we've done in the past, we passed out a spreadsheet outlining all the legislative bills that we're tracking, monitoring the session. We've got less than a week till the session breaks, next Monday signing die, and so we're going to be busy this next week. We may have to go to Austin on a transportation bill we're working on, as you all well know, the transportation moratorium bill. On the spreadsheet, a lot of these bills have been sent to the Governor's desk, some are either signed in both bodies, waiting to go to the Governor's desk, and a few are in the committee. The ones that are in the committee are more than likely not going to go anywhere, so...
I noticed on one in particular, David, since you provided us with the agenda item on Friday, Senate Bill 1158 and House Bill 1100 on the Almito subdivision has gone from intergovernmental relations and local consent to being signed in the Senate and signed in the House?
Yes, sir. It means that they've both been signed, and they're going to be sent to the Governor.
Good. Can we go carry them to the Governor?
I'm sorry?
I'm ready to get those to the Governor.
That's all I got for now.
Do I hear a motion to, any questions? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge David's report on the legislative session? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 32, possible action regarding the county's federal legislative agenda?
Judge, Commissioners, we sent letters to the South Texas County Judges and the Board of County Judges at the request of our County Judge regarding the VA Hospital and the border fence issue. We've already gotten some responses from some county judges to try to go to DC right after the Fourth of July to talk to our delegation on these issues. We had a meeting yesterday with the veterans in Wesaco. County Judge in El Alamo County was there, as well as our County Judge and the County Judge in Zoukouhia County. We're working with Senators Hutchinson and Cornyn, as well as Congressman Ortiz on our funding requests in Washington. One of the bills, excuse me, one of the bills that we are working on is the Water Resources Development Act. As you all will know, there is legislation to de-authorize the Arroyo Colorado that could impact our levees. To our surprise, that legislation, that language stayed in the bills that we're working on, so we've got some homework to do, and, you know, we've got to work our delegation and work the conference committee to make sure that they take that language out of the water bill. So we're going to prepare some letters to the conferees, and as well as to our delegation to ask them to take that out of the language. That's all I got for now.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge David's report on the federal legislative session?
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gaffsa.
Please let us know if we all need to follow up letters on the Arroyo Colorado issue.
Yes, I will. And on the state legislative, we might have some issues as well, so we'll let you know.
Thank you, David. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 33, discussion of possible actions to interview all firms that submitted an RFP, RFP 1730 for delinquent tax collection services. Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Gaffsa? Or me?
I didn't understand this email that I got.
Which one?
From Mr. Burris.
Richard, you want to?
Please, Richard.
You don't know the answer? Yeah, I know the answer, but I'd rather have legal answer, because she wrote the
I mean, if we don't follow Robert's rules, is Robert going to come down on us, or what?
I don't think we normally follow Robert's rules.
We never do, so why do we need to do this?
Uh, item 33. You want to discuss the email that you sent to the Court? This is a private issue. Attorney client...
Yes. Commissioner, do you have a specific question?
Why are we concerned with this?
It's, uh...
My historical recollections on actions of this sort are that three votes in this commission do whatever they want.
That's correct.
So why should we worry about Robert's rules tonight?
If you're not going to use Robert's rules, then you don't have to worry about it. But my understanding is in the past you've applied Robert's rules, or you've been trying to apply them. If you're not, I mean, that's not a law, that's Robert's rules. And if you want to, if you're applying Robert's rules, that is, the item 33 is an effective motion to reconsider, because you voted last meeting, as I understand it, I wasn't here, but as I understand it, two to one, to only consider interviews with two of the firms. So that's, right now, the standing vote of this court. And item 33 is to reconsider. If you don't want to apply, I mean, the county judge is a parliamentarian under Robert's rules, and it's up to you all. If you don't want to apply Robert's rules, it's not a law.
Yeah, but 33 doesn't say reconsider. It says discussion and possible action to interview all firms. There's no, reconsider is nowhere on that agenda request form.
But that's only, it takes a motion to reconsider to get there. I mean, you can't, just because it's on the agenda that way, what you're saying is that the county judge, then by putting that on the agenda, can force the council to reconsider an existing position of the court. And he can't by himself overrule what the court voted. He's only one vote. It takes this court to reconsider. If you want to, if you want to change it, then you have to change it. The court as a whole has to change it.
Well, I'm not in favor. If we're going to interview any of them, I would say interview all of them. I was not here last time, so...
I think that's what he's saying, that the way he interprets that either Commissioner Gaffsa and I have to make the motion to consider item 33. And I'll go ahead and make the motion to...
But all we've got to do is go to 34 and forget about 33?
Well, I think we have to do 33 before we do 34.
If you did that, you would be violating your own order, I mean, your own motion from the last meeting, Mr....
Well, I make, I make, you want to make the motion?
I mean, I just, I just kind of like, you know, I've dealt with Robert rules for many years, and this is the first time I get a legal opinion on Robert.
Second.
All right. That was moved by Commissioner Gaffsa, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
What was his motion?
To reconsider.
Well, it's item 33.
Yeah, 33.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 34, interviews of the delinquent tax collection firms that submitted an RFP.
Pete, Judge, and Commissioners, prior to the start of the meeting, I met with all four firms that are going to be interviewed tonight, and I provided instructions to those firms. At this time, we will begin the interview process, and the first firm that will be interviewed is the Linebarger Firm. So I would ask the other firms to please proceed in following the instructions that I gave.
I'm not sure what instructions you gave them, but it looks like they're leaving. And this is a public meeting. We can't ask people to leave. That's up to them.
I would concur with that.
This is an open meeting. We can't ask anyone to leave it.
That was the agreement that the firms had among themselves. If the court would like for all the firms to stay here, then that's up to the court.
I think it only fair that, and you're right, Commissioner, we can't force them to leave, but as a matter of courtesy...
But if they want to leave, that's their decision.
Yeah, if they want to leave, you know, we're asking, yeah, as a courtesy to all the other firms that are making proposals, that members of the firm, or any interested parties with that firm, step out while each firm gives their proposal. Obviously, if nobody wants to leave, they don't have to leave. Okay?
And we won't hold the fact that they don't leave against them. We're making our decisions.
All right, item 30, item 34, the Linebarger Firm. Who's going to represent the Linebarger Firm? We have, we have, just for the record, we have a set of nine questions that we will be asking every firm, those answers. So we're trying to keep it down about maybe 15 minutes, 20 minutes at the most, per firm. I think everybody in the court has had the opportunity to look at your proposal. I don't think there's a point in going over your proposal again, because you're going to run out of time. And some of these questions have to be asked, okay? Just so you know. So I don't know what you're, how you're going to do it, but unless a member of the court wants to see their proposal on video, or however they want to have it, or...
I just want to go straight to the questions, because they're, it's very comprehensive.
Okay. How about you?
There's somebody...
Okay, there appears to be a consensus from the court members, just to go straight to the questions that we're going to have. And I will tell you, for the benefit of the audience, every firm will be asked the same Now, please feel free to, if you want to add something to it, make it brief, okay? How many clients does your firm currently collect taxes for in South Texas, roughly?
We have, for the record, my name is John Givada. I'm a partner in the Brownsville office of Linebarger Goggan. In South Texas, here in Cameron County, we have approximately thirty clients. Those include school districts, municipalities, and presently the county. In Willacy County, we have approximately another twelve to fifteen.
Lucy Canales, on behalf of Linebarger. In Idaug County, we represent everybody but Mission School District and City. We don't represent Idaug, ISD, or the city of Idaug. And as of January, we don't represent Idaug County. We represent every jurisdiction in Starr County and represent Star, Zapata County.
So, what's the number?
The number in Idaug County would be about thirty-four.
Anything further?
Starr County, it's four jurisdictions. And in Zapata County, it's two.
All right. Are you willing to negotiate your rate any further from what you've presented to the proposal? That just requires a yes or no answer. You don't have to tell us what your fee is. We're just asking if you're willing to negotiate your fee further. Yes or no?
Well, you asked me, you told us we could add to our answer, so I'm...
As long as you don't compromise anything, you're fine.
No.
Okay.
Now, adding to that answer, I'm very concerned on a professional basis as well as a taxpayer here in Cameron County. And if you're going to reduce the penalty for the six percent of the people who do not pay their delinquent taxes on time, you're going to take away the incentive for the other ninety-four percent who do to pay their current taxes. What you will have is additional delinquent taxes.
Good point. Thank you. Number three, how soon would you be able to start operating in Cameron County?
Immediately. We have a working, qualified, and experienced staff collecting for you today.
What type of support staff, infrastructure, and coordination would you provide to the county?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
What type of support staff, infrastructure, and coordination would you provide to the county?
In our proposal, we have proposed to provide an employee once a week for other requirements of the proposal for Cameron County, under the direction of the person who is a liaison, which would be me, and the tax collector. As a matter of fact, that, to some extent, this is already ongoing with our tax sales. We have an employee, we've had an employee in there the last two tax sales. In addition...
In addition, I'd like to add that we have the Brownsville staff present today, which is about twenty people, and ask them to stand up today. These are the people that are servicing Cameron County presently. I'd ask them to stand up. These are the people that come to the Brownsville office day to day and live in Cameron County and work in Cameron County and pay taxes in Cameron County. In addition to that, we already have an infrastructure. Our law firm has spent a lot of money in the infrastructure. We do no outsourcing of our mailings. We are ready and capable to do as many mailings as needed on behalf of Cameron County.
Can you say the twenty staff members, just as a follow-up question, they're dedicated solely to Cameron County, the entity, or these are, they're, they do work for all the entities within Cameron County?
They represent other entities within Cameron County.
Okay.
However, we have, we have a coordinator for Cameron County, but because we have area managers, the area managers that are responsible for individual regions of the county, such as San Benito, Santa Maria, we have one person working that area, they include the county because the county is a first to go. If you look at all our petitions, the county is number one. And we include all the other entities in there. So, it's just, it fits naturally.
Okay. Thank you. Item five, describe your project team's experience implementing a delinquent tax attorney program. Item B, what individuals within your team have specific experience with delinquent tax collections?
Our Brownsville staff currently has over a hundred and fifty years of combined collection experience. We have three attorney positions here in Cameron County with additional support in Edinburgh of three or four, three to four additional attorney positions. And the Edinburgh office, the support that we would get from the Edinburgh office contributes another three hundred to three hundred and fifty years of combined experience. We have employees who have collected for Cameron County back when Heard was the firm collecting for, for the county and then upon the merger. As a matter of fact, can the Heard people stand up that used to be with Heard? These people have represented Cameron County for fifteen to sixteen years. They know the demographics. They know the dynamics of the county. So, we're glad to have them. They bring a wealth of experience.
In addition, I think what the Linebarger Firm brings to Cameron County is you already have this established office here in Brownsville, but you have the additional support one hour away in Edinburgh. And there are fifty-three individuals in Edinburgh, ready to assist, assist if necessary in Cameron County. And we have done so in the past.
Thank you. Item six, what levels of responsibility, authority would key staff members be assigned and at what point would the principals become involved, principal partner be involved?
Well, you have myself, I'm a capital partner. I'm on the management committee of the Linebarger Firm, so if there are any decisions that need to be made, I would be the principal to contact and I would do that with my fellow partners on the management committee. You also have here in the Valley, you have John Givada, who is a partner in the firm in the Brownsville office. And you have two additional partners who are here today, Cindy Shammel and Lydia Ledezma in the Edinburgh office. So, you have a total of four partners in the Rio Grande Valley area.
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
Okay, I, I missed the beginning of that.
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
Well, we have a complete bankruptcy and complex litigation support team in Austin. You have a bankruptcy team that, that represents Cameron County on all bankruptcy matters. In addition, we have a team that assists with federal seizures and foreclosures. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about. The staff that is here in place represents Cameron County here in, in Cameron County. However, if there are defendants that are not within the county borders, we, our staff will, will locate them and include them in suits. So, we go everywhere and anywhere to represent and protect Cameron County's interests, both through the bankruptcy team, the federal foreclosures, FDIC, and then your local delinquent tax collections.
In addition to this, Linebarger brings to Cameron County the, the firm that is most qualified. We represent a lot of the counties along the border. We represent Cameron County, jurisdictions in Idaug County, Zapata County, Starr County, El Paso County. There are special issues that come with representing a border county, such as Colonia, which we've done, part of the fee. We've done that in a receivership in Austin at no additional cost to the county. We've represented counties and other issues with transborder ownership and the indigent population. We know the demographics, we know the people, and that we know we have a lot of indigent people and we work payment plans for that. That is the benefit you get with the Linebarger Group in the Valley. They know the demographics and the variables that are particular to Cameron County.
What efforts and strategies would you employ that would assure Cameron County that you will make every effort to aggressively collect and still provide the customer services needed to support your collection efforts?
I'm sorry, I, I'd like you to repeat that. It's kind of a complex...
All right. What efforts and strategies would you employ that would assure Cameron County that you will make every effort to aggressively collect and still provide the customer services needed to support your collection efforts?
Our firm, our firm has proposed, has done in the past and proposes this time around to send out at least nine mailers per year for the county. This is a very instrumental part of our program because it allows taxpayers, it gives them notice that there's, there's taxes that are due. We also, we also have established successful tax sale and resale programs here in Cameron County. Some of our competitors, their resale program consists of having taxpayers submit a proposal or a bid in writing or in person where we actually conduct a sale for, for Cameron County. Cameron County is very high on our priority list. As a matter of fact, let me give you an example. Three years ago, the county was facing a situation that involved housing federal prisoners and the potential loss of revenue. The county came to us then and asked us to raise the bar, collect three hundred thousand dollars more in base tax than what you originally, what was originally budgeted, was the goal that was originally given to us. We met that goal. So, we, we've worked very closely with the county. Any, any needs that you need, the best program is a program where we can talk and, and we can get things done. So, whatever efforts that you feel that we need to do, we will do. But we've got an excellent program here. Our collection results are outstanding. You have successful tax sale and resale programs, national bankruptcy representation. We cover the whole thing.
Back in two thousand, also, we were asked to assist Cameron County in the managing of their properties that were struck off to Cameron County as trustee. At that time, you all had a property manager that would manage those properties. About two thousand and three, we took over that process. At that time, we were given over about three hundred and thirty-five properties in no order. We worked with county staff, worked that list, actually gave the county an inventory of county-owned properties. And that list, that resale list is now being reduced as of today to only nineteen properties that are struck off to Cameron County as trustee and five we have bids to bring to the county. That's a tremendous effort. That's going the extra mile and that's what you get with this Linebarger Firm.
Do I ask a follow-up question since you brought up about the three hundred thousand dollars after you were asked to do that? I would think that you would want to do that anyway, to maximize the collection. So, why would you feel or believe that we would have to ask to do that? Why wouldn't you be maximizing those collection efforts all along instead of waiting for us to ask you to try to collect more?
We had to increase the number of mailings that we were doing when the, when the, number one, we're collecting all the time. We are, we've got excellent results for you. I think we hit thirty-two, almost thirty-two percent of your delinquent tax roll last year. You were at about seven million in your DTR. Right now, we're at about five point two million. So, we've, we've made a big hit there. We collect for you all the time, but, but you came to us and said, "We need an extra three hundred thousand." How are you going to do it? We have to file more suits. We were, we were running ragged and this, this is where it count, this is where the support from the Edinburgh office comes into play. You asked us to do something more. We brought in more resources to get that job done. That's not to say that we can't do that every year. I mean, we're, we're attempting to collect all the time. But as you see in the news, the mortgage industry is lending out to a whole bunch of people. They're lowering their, 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 they're just lending to more people. So, you're going to see more bankruptcies. You're going to, you're going to, you're going to see the need to have a successful bankruptcy program. So, this plan is evolving. Wherever we see we need to collect more for the county, we're going to go for it. But if you ask us, if you ask us to increase by three hundred thousand, we need to bring in extra, extra resources.
Last question. What unique, innovative methods, procedures, and/or approaches would your team bring and implement on this project?
What we would bring in would be extra resources if necessary. We've also implemented here in the Valley, which is the Knock and Talk Program. Our people go out, map out, buy either by subdivisions. And we do that, like when we were asked to raise that, I mean, to try to increase collections by additional three hundred thousand, what we did was bring in the Edinburgh people and let the, the staff of the Brown, the Brownsville staff go in and visit a lot of subdivisions. It takes a lot of coordination. We're ready to do that. In fact, that program was implemented here in the Valley, which was an innovative method and is now used throughout the state within our firm. And it is an effective collection tool because a lot of times these people do not know, number one, that they owe taxes. Number two, we also educate them that they might be entitled to some type of exemption, people that are over sixty-five, homestead exemption. Yes, we notify them of the delinquency. We ask them to come make, come in and make a payment plan, but we also educate the taxpayer.
You've got two minutes to close.
Our staff has done an outstanding job for the county. We've given you a collection program where our statistics are, for instance, in Cameron County last year, the two thousand and five tax year, we had a forty... Go ahead.
I'm going to, I'm going to do this with the closing. Despite the demographic variables that we have in Cameron County, which is, we have a lower median income, let's say, than Dallas. The median income in Cameron County is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars in comparison to Dallas County, which is at forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven. Cameron County has a high unemployment rate, at ten point three, in comparison to, let's say, El Paso, which is at nine point seven, and Oasis County. But if I give you the statistics, which I'm willing to do right now for two thousand and five, Cameron County's collection rate for base tax all years, now just one year, all years, July through June, was forty-one point three percent in comparisons to Oasis at thirty-six point eight, thirty-three percent for El Paso, and twenty-nine point six. You have an effective bankruptcy program here, a tax sale program, a resale program. I'd like to also point out again, on that resale program, you have only nineteen properties struck off. We put over one point five million dollars in value back on the tax roll for assessment. The people here in Brownsville work hard. They come and do and collect taxes every day. That is all we do. Your lawyers here and your staff don't have to run to bankruptcy court because we've got bankruptcy lawyers that do that. All we do day in and day out is collect delinquent property taxes. We don't represent other taxpayers. We don't do personal injury. We don't do corporate work. All we do is collect solely delinquent taxes. And the program that's in, in place in Cameron County has been very effective and we're very proud of the percentage of collections that we've been able to establish on behalf of Cameron County.
Just one last question, then. Your firm is strictly a tax collection firm?
Yes, for government receivables.
All right. Any other questions for any member of the court that I may have failed to ask? Thank you. We've all had an opportunity to look at the proposals. We've got a set of ten questions, maybe more towards the end if we decide. And we just ask the question and they just provide the best answer that you can and take it from there, all right?
Thank you.
All right. You can, the other firm made some opening comments. You can make a short one-minute opening. You have an opportunity to make a about two-minute closing. And in between, we'll ask the, the questions, okay?
Judge Coscos, Commissioners, my name is Dino Asparza. And on behalf of my partners here, Eddie Gaffsa and Enrique Pena, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present and introduce our firm to you. It's, with, with one minute, Judge, I mean, we, we'd had prepared a, a real nice presentation for you, but either way, we want to answer your questions. If there's anything that we're proud of, Judge, it's, it's the fact that we're a local firm. We're a Cameron County-based firm and I wouldn't stand here today and, and expect you all to vote for a firm simply because we're nice guys who live in Cameron County. We feel that we presented a, a proposal to you that meets the criteria of your, of your proposal. We're very proud of that as well. And we'd ask, hopefully, the question is geared toward the, the rate that we're offering. It's, it's, it's based on the meet, last meeting, we know it's the lowest rate, but we want you to, hope you ask questions as to why that rate helps the taxpayers and the Cameron, and Cameron County. We also have incentives that we're real proud of in this package that, that will, wherein we absorb, absorb costs to further save money for the, for the taxpayers of Cameron County. And as far as the, the experience issue, Judge, I mean, we, we know we're going up against firms that, that collect taxes all over the nation, all over the state. I, I don't want to admit that we're the underdog, but if you, we're not applying to collect taxes all over the nation. We're, we're applying to collect taxes in Cameron County. And we would submit to you that if you evaluate the experience of the office that we are presenting to you to collect your taxes in Cameron County and compare the office experience of the satellite offices that our opponents will set up in Cameron County to, to collect your taxes if they're awarding, awarded this contract, that's really what we'd like you to focus on today because if, we feel that our experience, legal experience, will exceed the legal experience of the satellite offices created by our opponents. With that, I'll turn the podium over to my partners and we'll be ready to address the questions.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Esparsa. And these questions were asked of the previous firm and they will be asked of every firm, okay? How many clients does your firm currently collect taxes for in South Texas?
Currently, the firm, Peña, Esparsa, and Garcia just got established recently in an effort to try and pursue the contracts with the county and other Cameron County-based taxing entities. As far as our firm itself, named under Peña, Esparsa, and Garcia, the only client contract that we are currently in possession of is the Brownsville Independent School District, which is the largest tax base, tax collecting entity in Cameron County. My partner, Rick Benny, over here, has had some experience in working with the majority of the Cameron County taxing entities in the past six and a half years, having accounts, many of which had interlocal agreements with Cameron County. But as far as our new firm, since it's newly established, the only one that we could claim personally would be the Brownsville Independent School District.
Thank you. Are you willing to negotiate your rate any further from what you presented in the proposal? And that is just a yes or no answer?
Yes.
How soon would you be able to start operating in Cameron County?
We would probably be, the request for proposal indicated that after contract for us to be up and running within 30 days. We estimate, we already have our space and a new office setting up on the side of the highway up north by the Alton War exit. So we're looking at probably around two weeks from today, give or take.
What type of support staff, infrastructure, and coordination would you provide to the county?
We will have paralegals, we have five paralegals in addition to three collectors that will be helping collect the taxes for delinquent, for the delinquent taxes for Cameron County, in addition to our three attorneys and our bankruptcy attorney and our office manager. In addition, we also have a technology, a computer technology, which is Frank Ostia Jr., which will be on staff with our firm to help facilitate the movement of data between our two offices, the Cameron County Tax Office, our mailroom, and our office.
On that issue too, Judge, if I may just add something. We'll also have two fully-staffed offices located in Brownsville. The lawyers you see before you here today are the only lawyers that would be servicing your account. There's no other associates or anybody else that would be doing your work. The people presenting to you here today would be the people managing your account. In addition to that, we'd also have, we're proud of the fact that we're incorporating the services of a local bankruptcy attorney, a local outsourcing firm, and an office manager that has 13 years' experience in tax collection. All of the representatives and all of our support staff would be local Cameron County-based personnel.
Describe your project team's experience implementing a delinquent tax attorney program. What individuals within your team have specific experience with delinquent tax collections?
Your Honor, I myself have six and a half years' experience as a delinquent tax attorney here in Cameron County, collecting taxes there in Cameron. And our office manager, Julio Lozano, has 13 years' experience exclusively in Cameron County collecting taxes. This will be the basis for our collection team right now.
Thank you. What levels of responsibility, authority would key staff members be assigned and at what point would the principals be involved?
All three of the partners, the named partners in this firm, will have authority to bind the firm, make decisions and representations to the county at the county's request. All decisions would be made by us and we plan to be intimately involved in the operation of our business. So the actual decision-making process would happen with us three. We're all office in Brownsville, we all live in Brownsville, and our offices are moments away from your courthouse.
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
Right now, since with my experience, I'll know that we're going to have to continue doing door-to-door collections. Julio Lozano's ready and prepared to set up the staff that we have to do those door-to-door collections, as well increase our lawsuit production, which has been averaged around 500. Your lawsuit production of the firm that represents you right now is 500. We intend to increase that to up to 700 lawsuits in the next year.
Well, as a follow-up to that question, how do you intend to do that?
Well, now that we have three full-staffed attorneys, we can handle the caseload. And because with Julio's experience with, during the door-to-door collections, that is easily accessible. But the fact that we have three experienced attorneys, we will be able to handle that caseload easily.
Okay.
Your Honor, one of the basic concepts also of our firm, our philosophy, is to be aggressive, to attempt to collect as best we can, and to stay focused and local. So unlike some of our competitors, we will not be dispersed all over the state, having to manage multiple offices and personnel from all over. We'll be focused on collecting the taxes associated with our Cameron County-based accounts. So that is one thing that we think we offer because we'll be able to give you the personal attention that your account needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What efforts and strategies would you employ that would assure Cameron County that you will make every effort to aggressively collect and still provide the customer services needed to support your collection efforts?
As we stated before, the fact that we know that door-to-door collections increase, uh, collections, door-to-door collections will increase the collections of the county. And with the increase in lawsuit production, we feel that forceful collects, forced collections, like with the lawsuit production, will help the county reach its goals. We had to get out there and meet the taxpayers and we're ready to do that.
Also, Judge and commissioners, with respect to that issue, we'd also like to point out that with the exception of the firm that is currently servicing the county's delinquent tax collection account, I believe we're the only law firm that has lawyers who have experience collecting taxes in Cameron County. The familiarity with our jurisdiction, our subdivisions, our areas, I think is important and intimate in trying to have a good, steady collection goal. And in addition, like we said before, limited amount of clients allows personal attention to your client to satisfy the county's needs in the upcoming years.
May I make one point on that, Your Honor? I missed that. We're going to increase our media advertisement through the newspaper and billboards, warning, enticing taxpayers to come into the tax office. We're going to establish that for the BIST and we would do that also for Cameron County.
What unique or innovative methods, procedures, and/or approaches would your team bring and implement on this project?
I think I just hit it right there. We not really hit, media has not been used in Cameron County in a while. And I believe that by newspapers, radio announcements, and billboards reminding people of the taxes, encouraging them coming to our tax, into the law office and the tax office, it's just a simple reminder, especially during the heavy months of the summer and through the fall.
Also, Your Honor, by virtue of the fact that we'll be collecting for the Brownsville Independent School District, which is one of the, which is the largest taxing entity in the county, at the same time that the taxpayers, the delinquent taxpayers for the Brownsville Independent School District could be coming to pay their taxes at our offices, if we were servicing the county's account as well, we would duplicate our efforts and expedite collection because the same people that tend to be delinquent with Brownsville Independent School District tend to be delinquent on all their taxes, including Cameron County. So since we're already in place and we're going to be working on the Brownsville Independent School District account, it would benefit the county in that we'd have one office, one location, or two locations for our offices where these people could come and make their payments simultaneously.
Your Honor, if I may, for specialized efforts, we include tax warrants, foreclosures, tax sales, door-to-door. We're also planning to open up an office in Harlingen so that your constituents from the Santa Maria, Santa Rosa, La Feria, Rio Grande, Harlingen area, don't have to come all the way to Brownsville and they have to deal with delinquent taxpayer, with delinquent attorneys.
I'm glad you added that because I was going to remind you, young man, that there's more to Cameron County than Brownsville.
I understand. That's why he's got 13 years' experience.
And we're planning, that office was, you know, in mind, we're planning to do, you know, schedule and do appointments if they would need to speak to an attorney, we would go there. That's to help schedule the payment agreements and take payments too if they would like.
Just a follow-up question because you've said it several times. Just briefly describe what your door-to-door concept is.
With that, we target the top accounts, top, middle, and low because we have to hit across the board to be fair to all taxpayers. And we'll produce statements, especially starting in July, and have a team that would hit certain, hit all areas of the county and go by subdivision, subdivision, targeting those high-dollar accounts. And in between, dropping off even the accounts that owe $50 to $1,000. We're going to hit them across the board. If we're going to be in that neighborhood, we're going to hit the whole neighborhood. And that's the only way to be fair with all taxpayers and not just targeting one segment of the tax roll.
Your Honor, one more thing also, sir, when your constituents come into our office, if they are of an elderly age, I always check to see that they're over 65, homestead exemption is in place. Because they have no need to pay their taxes if they're over 65 and they own their home. And that is a reminder that a lot of these people are not aware of and it's a big break for them.
Thank you. Last question, I think. Is your firm strictly a tax collection firm? And that's just a yes or no answer?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for any member of the court? Let's hope not.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, one of the things that I've experienced in the last six years is how involved a tax firm gets in county politics. And I have a very simple question. How involved do you plan to get? Or is that going to be part of the process that you use to do things? Or are you going to base yourself on maybe productivity versus county politics involvement?
You want to ask?
No, no, please.
Congressman Garcia, actually, whether I'm involved with a tax firm or not, I've always been involved in politics. My partners here have indicated to me that I may have to reduce my role in the political field simply because of the role that we'll be playing in serving multiple entities throughout the county. Naturally, I would be honest with you, I mean, we'll be involved to a certain extent. I mean, I've got a very large family and they're always involved in one race or another. But for the most part, we're going to be very careful, we're going to protect our clients, we're going to represent the interests of our clients and protect our business as well.
Commissioner, specifically with respect to myself, over the years, I've actually kind of the diametric opposite of my partner, Dino, over here. I've been criticized for not getting as involved as perhaps I should be in political arenas. I'm kind of one of those lawyers who likes to be in the office, grinding the paper and doing, holding down the fort and doing whatnot. But I think we have a commonality amongst the three of us in that we do care about how our governments are run, how our cities and our counties, school districts and whatnot. So it's always important to keep abreast of what's happening and to get involved to the extent that's necessary to ensure that we have good government. So in that regard, I would say yes, should be involved. But as far as day-to-day politics, days go by where I don't read the newspaper sometimes myself.
These three young ethical guys that I'm associated with, when you guys put the gag order out, Judge, we need them to participate in your golf tournament for fear of breaking that. But as far as getting into politics, no. Thank you. You've got two minutes to close.
Judge, I had a follow-up question to number three, if I may.
Sure.
When you asked how soon would you be able to start operating in Cameron County, what, do you have your software in place? Is that, I would like some information on that.
Specifically, the system that we intend on using, it's kind of strange language, but it's going to be universally compliant with what's called a SQL-compliant database. That is the database that the county utilizes to compile its data. It's a Microsoft-based system. The collection, the debt collection software program we've been looking at, and the one that we've made a decision that we're going to purchase, is called Collect Max Win. It is also a Microsoft-based debt collection service and it should, according to our computer technician, it should correlate the data fantastic with respect to any SQL-compliant database such as that of the county. The, in your, in the RFP, I believe it was asked whether or not we would be able to have software that was compliant with your, the system. The IBMA is 400, 510 easy tax system that the county has, and we've been confirmed that yes, it is. As far as that system being up and running and ready to start collecting tax data once the county were to release data rolls to us, if we were awarded the contract, that also would be within about a week.
And to follow up on that one, our mailroom, the digit source that we use, they're ready to handle anything right now. They're, they've been doing mailouts for, as an example, doctor's offices, other attorney's offices because they can handle receiving the data from the tax office. So in a sense, once they get our letter, those letters that we use for taxpayers, we're ready to mail out July 1st.
Any other questions? No? Two minutes.
To speak to you today, I think like all the other firms that have presented to you and that have spoken to you, we've put a lot of time and effort and thought into preparing a package that we thought would be in the best interest of the county and the best interest of the taxpayer. The only points that I wish to conclude with to make sure that we try to show you what our package involves is, one, it involves our rate and how that rate would affect the county and the taxpayers. Our rate is 12.5%, and that's the rate that would compensate our firm for the services we provide. That rate would be paid by taxpayers. Once they get charged a delinquent tax that they haven't paid, they get charged penalties, interest, and on top of that, 12.5% penalty. So the lower that rate is, the less that taxpayer has to pay when making up his delinquent tax payment. So to the extent of how that would affect the county's taxpayers, the lower the rate, the better for the taxpayer because the less they pay in the long run. How that would affect the county would be the lower the rate, the lower the taxpayer has to pay on collection plans. Many times when these taxpayers go delinquent, they have a debt that is taxed on all these penalties, interest, and attorney's fees that they pay over time. The higher the attorney's fees that are taxed on top of that, the larger that base amount is. The larger that base amount is, the longer it takes for the county to collect it. So by having a lower fee, you expedite collection for the county because that money comes into your coffers a lot faster. And in addition, it increases your cash flow, kind of bird in the hand versus two in the field. If you have money coming into your account quickly, it could assist you in doing the projects and facing the needs of the county as they sit now. In addition, we've offered to absorb the costs of mailings. In your proposal, in the RFP, I'm sorry, you asked if the firms would be willing to agree to absorb the cost of one mailout. My firm has gone beyond that and agreed to absorb the costs of two additional mailouts. We estimate the cost of these mailouts to be approximately $25,000 to $30,000 a year, meaning that if you were to award the contract to our firm and we absorb these costs, over the four-year term of the contract, we could save somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 to $120,000. I realize this is an estimation, I can't tell you verbatim until you know exactly how many mailings you're having, but a rough estimate would be somewhere between $100,000 and $120,000. We offer that incentive and our firm is willing to take less in attorney's fees because of the fact that we belong to this county, we're a part of this county, we're taxpayers like everyone else in this room, and we believe that it's a fair and equitable opportunity. Also, by offering the lower, the reason we're able to offer a low tax rate, I mean, a low compensation rate and some additional incentives, is that we are exclusively local. We don't have 25 partners or 30 different lawyers that we have to pay and work on. What you see here is pretty much what makes up and compromises the equity of our firm. So in that regard, we're trying to stay lean, we're trying to stay firm, and we're trying to stay focused here in Cameron County. So I thank you for your time and your attention. I appreciate your questions. I hope we answer them to your satisfaction. But please know, as Dino mentioned earlier, you know, back when we were graduating high school down here, everybody that ever spoke to you at graduation said, "Well, you need to go out, get educated, come back home, bring that education, and bring it back to the Valley." Well, that's what we did. We went out, we got educated with the help of our families, thank God. And after that, we brought back to try to get opportunities here in Cameron. And all we're asking for is a chance to show you what we can do. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The Purdue firm? So it's going to be a little bit different. You're not going to set up a presentation. We'll explain it to you when y'all get settled in.
All right. Thank you.
Just allow me a couple of minutes to let you know how we're doing this. Every member of the court got a copy of the proposals and I'm sure that everybody is taking a look at them and gone over them. The, with the help of staff, we've developed a few questions that we're going to ask. Basically, you'll have about a one or two-minute, and we've been pretty flexible with that, maybe a one or two-minute presentation or introduction. And then we will proceed to ask you about 11 questions and then you'll have about maybe two or three minutes to close, okay?
Okay.
So with that, just introduce your firm and...
Two to three minutes opening.
About a two minutes.
All right. With me, Donnie Roseman from our Houston office, Ruben Peña, our local liaison, Sergio Garcia, Austin and McAllen, Iram Gutierrez, McAllen, John David Franz, Attorney McAllen, Burley Ariaga from Brownsville, she's our call center supervisor, John David Franz Jr., Field Inspector, Robert Lopez, Legal Assistant. We're very pleased to be able to present to Cameron County our qualifications to do the delinquent tax collection. We looked very carefully at the RFP as well and it appears to us that the criteria that you'll be grading us on, 80% of that involves experience, demonstrated ability to collect taxes, and ability to improve tax collections. taxes, and ability to improve tax collections. That's 80% of the scoring. We bring 37 years of delinquent tax collection to the table experience. We are one of two firms located in the Rio Grande Valley that are ready to start collections tomorrow. We are fully staffed with 21 people in McAllen, ready to collect taxes in Cameron County tomorrow. There is one firm that has no track record, we have a track record, in Hidalgo County especially. Today, we reported to Commissioner's Court in Hidalgo County. We took over the account January 1st, and collections are up 15.74% over the first four months in Hidalgo County. And that was, we have two months in our proposal because it was submitted in March. We have more current information and certified tax statements for your review if you wish. I would just say, sir, that we listened to the meeting earlier, and tax collection is too important to entrust to just any firm. You have a $78 million budget, you're turning over about 6.3 million in delinquencies a year. Your current firm, which charges 20%, is collecting about 31%. We've got the track record to improve on that and allow you to put more money in county coffers to help the needs of Cameron County residents. We recognize that 54% of your budget comes from property taxes. As you get more aggressive with delinquent tax collection, that helps your current tax collection. Finally, I'd point out that Cameron County's tax collection, the current tax assessor, collector, and the delinquent tax attorney have failed to meet your goals four out of the last six, two out of the last three years, and that was in the RFP. So we welcome change, we'd love to be a part of Cameron County and be a part of your team.
Thank you. First question. How many clients does your firm currently collect taxes for in South Texas?
Nine, possibly 10. And by South Texas, I am talking about the Rio Grande Valley.
The Valley.
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to negotiate your rate any further from what you presented in the proposal? And that's just a yes or no answer?
No.
How soon would you be able to start operating in Cameron County?
As soon as we can hook up to your Cameron County database. We understand your software provider is EasyTax. It would take two to three days, and we've talked to them.
You've already spoken to them?
Yes, sir.
What type of support staff, infrastructure, and coordination would you provide to the county?
We've got a sampling of the personnel here. We believe in personal contacts. We understand that the RFP requested eight mailouts a year. It's been our experience that if people get letters month after month, they tend not to pay attention to them. We are more into making phone calls to our call center. We have 11 folks in McAllen. We would open up an office in Cameron County and have a life-type staff there. If phone calls don't work, Judge, we send field collectors to knock on doors. And what we do is we do a top-to-bottom list. In other words, the higher delinquencies get addressed more quickly. But that's the type of staff and support. We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in data, software, invested by the Purdue firm, which help us locate people. You'll also find that there'll be a lot of bad addresses. Your tax office will send out letters, and it won't get to the right person. We invest a lot of time and effort in making sure that the delinquent taxpayer is identified, located, and served with the paperwork. But that's the type of support you can expect.
Describe your project team's experience implementing a delinquent tax attorney program, and what individuals within your team have specific experience with delinquent tax collections.
Donnie? I'm going to bring the senior member of the firm and get somebody else involved here.
I'm not the senior, I just look that way. What we would do is, we have a senior attorney that would oversee the operation. That's going to be John Banks and John David. John Banks's main office is out of Austin. From that, we'll have legal assistants involved based on the volume and number of accounts that are turned over to us on a delinquent basis. We'll have call center staff determined really by the number of delinquent accounts that we need to call. My first guess would be seven to 10 people to start, and they would see where that would go as we get through the role. Those people are easy to add. Then we'd have title researchers. Some would be done locally, in-house, and some would be done contracted out so that we can identify the owner of real property. The appraisal district gets it right most of the time, but not always. And then we would do some in-house and we'd contract it out based on that volume. That's pretty much the staff, and then we have procedures, you know, between sending letters and telephone calls, and then litigation when needed.
Could you just clarify one more point? I kind of lost you on, I think somebody mentioned, I think, Mayor, you mentioned something about the number of mailouts that you anticipate sending out. Could you just repeat that? I missed it.
We, well, the county RFP requests eight mailouts a year in addition to what your tax office sends out. I think they send out another four. And what we approached and proposed to Hidalgo County is instead of sending letters every month, give us a chance to do it our way, the Purdue way. And that means if you don't get a response after the first or second letter, let's get on the phone, let's make personal contact, let's knock on doors, let's go to businesses, especially business and personal property. That's critical because that becomes delinquent February 1st. And if you let a business, personal property account go delinquent for too long, chances are the assets are leaving the county, and you're going to be left with a bad debt that won't get collected. So we're very aggressive on that and very professional. When I say aggressive, Judge, members of the court, we practice courtesy professionalism. We're trying to help taxpayers out of problems. We're not there to boot anybody out of their house, we're there to give them options. One of the options that's very successful in Hidalgo County are partial payment plans. So getting back to the letters, it's been their experience, and I've seen it in Hidalgo County. You don't get a response if you're used to seeing the same letter coming from the lawyer. There's no threat, there's no follow-up, people quit opening them. But if you substitute personal contact for mailouts, you enhance your chance at success.
Okay. The question is, how many mailers do you anticipate doing?
We will do what the county, if the county wants eight, we'll do eight.
And you absorb, I guess, the cost?
Yes, we pay for the cost. What we would like to do is at some point talk to the county and say, "Let's get a little creative, let's see if we can make it work better."
Okay, that's fine.
If eight is what's needed, eight will be done at our cost.
Okay. What levels of responsibility, authority would key staff members be assigned, and at what point would the principals be involved?
I am involved, my name's on this proposal as an associate, so I am involved in 100% of the operation, from supervising employees to getting involved in litigation. One of the things we haven't talked about is there are federal seizures, state seizures, when people get caught with narcotics or fail to pay their income taxes. We provide that representation at no cost. I'm appearing in behalf of Hidalgo County in several pieces of litigation in federal court where people have been caught with drugs in their home. And my job is to protect the taxing entity's interests because the government's going to seize it, and they're going to auction it off. And that's my responsibility in federal court and state court litigations. Donnie, on bankruptcy and...
Iram Gutierrez is our most senior local lawyer, and he's going to be involved in this project. Salma Banduch is joining us June 1. She's also going to be joining us in this project. As for senior principals, John Banks, the managing attorney out of the Austin office, and myself, we're both going to be involved, not in the day-to-day, but in the aspects, John will be involved in the day-to-day, I will not. My role is to make certain we have enough resources devoted to get the job done the way you want it done and the way we want it done.
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
We look at the needs and we get the people there. In Hidalgo County, for example, we've got 21 positions, which are, out of those, 18 are newly created. Only Sergio, myself, and John Banks were in Hidalgo. So there's 18 new positions created. We have hired from other firms with experience, and we've brought on and trained people. Burley and Robert were in the Houston office. They're originally from the Valley, and they were happy to move down and be a start of the office. Burley wants this deal done in Brownsville, that'll avoid her driving to McAllen every day. She's been with the firm for a long time. So we're prepared to get you the people that are going to do the job and continue the success that we've shown with other entities.
What efforts and strategies would you employ that would assure Cameron County that you will make every effort to aggressively collect and still provide the customer services needed to support your collection efforts?
I can't stress enough that personal contact is a key to this. There are three firms who have collected taxes for years, McCrery, Linebarger, ourselves. They've got track records, but I think what separates us from the three is the personal contact. We've got a former Linebarger attorney here who will tell you, they did not send people out into the field like we send people out into the field. That's the key. That's how you get people's attention, when you knock on their door. And even if the owner's not there, if you just say, "Would you please have him call the office? We need to talk about something that's owing to Cameron County." It makes a big difference. You get people's attention, and that's that extra step that I think separates us from the rest.
What unique, renovative methods, procedures, or approaches would your team bring and implement on this project?
We've got technology, we've got access to all kinds of databases, which allows to locate people. There's really, in terms of creativity, one of the things we'd like to do is think outside of the box. Just because for 20 years Cameron County's been sending out eight mailouts a year, maybe we need to look at something a little different, especially when two out of the last three years, you've not met your goals. So we'd like an opportunity to get with Mr. Sagirre, explore new ways to do it. You know, technology, the internet is wonderful, it's easy to get a hold of people, but when it comes down to tax collection, like any type of collection, if somebody owes you money, there's no substitute to going out, knocking on the door, and asking for them to come square. Because, you know what, the roads, the police, law enforcement, health, welfare, it's all paid for by those tax dollars. And we explain to people, "Listen, we represent the county, and this is something that's very important and needs to be addressed." It's not creative, but it's old-school, rolling up your sleeves and getting the job done.
Is your firm strictly a tax collection firm?
Purdue Brandon is, and I've become probably 70%.
We also do other governmental collections, too, in certain parts of the state. Some fine and fee work. We do standby fee collections for mud districts in the Houston area that have standby fees. In the Panhandle, one of the offices handles some hospital collections, but that's a very small pool.
So it's basically a collection firm?
Yes.
Be it tax collections or...
Property tax, because we also around the state represent a lot of appraisal districts in defending them on their values.
Last question's by Commissioner Barza.
How involved do you anticipate getting in local county politics?
Local county politics? That's a tough one, and I'll tell you that as an elected official, you know, if we get selected, we're going to concentrate on doing the job. Now, will we get involved if we're asked if a commissioner says, you know, "Can you help the Boys and Girls Club?" Absolutely. We want to become a part of the community, we want to invest in the community. You know, whatever the law permits, things done above board, if there's a fundraiser of some sort, I can tell you, we'll be there, but everything will be done above board the way the law requires. And at no point do we want to leave anyone with the impression that somehow our service has been purchased by buying votes. Any appearance of impropriety, we are going to avoid, and if that means we don't get a job with some taxing entity, then so be it. But integrity is something that is very important to this group. I am proud to say that not I or anyone associated with Purdue has ever been charged with any type of unethical or unprofessional behavior. And, you know, I've got young boys that look up to me, and they're going to know that their dad did things by the book. That's very important to me.
Thank you. You've got two minutes to close.
We think that, you know, if you look at the proposal, we know it's very thick, there's a lot of information, but I think on paper, based on experience, demonstrated ability to collect taxes, if you look at some of the letters of recommendation, we're familiar with the border area. If you look at letters of recommendation from Presidio County, from Hidalgo County, they'll talk to you about bilingual notices. We have a bilingual staff here on the ground. We speak Spanish. Probably in Hidalgo County, 60, 70% of our conversations with taxpayers are in Spanish. That's very important. Something you should note in one of the letters is that we replaced the McCrery firm in Presidio County, and it wasn't until we got involved that they started doing, that Presidio County started doing Spanish. So we know that the demographics of Cameron County are very similar to Hidalgo County. The folks here are suffering like the folks in Hidalgo County. And we think that being one of two firms that's fully staffed, fully equipped, there's only two firms ready to start work immediately, and of the two firms that are ready to do work for you, one of them hasn't met the targets of the county two of the last three years. And they have charged taxpayers a third more in attorney's fees. That's a big difference. And if somebody's willing to go less than 15%, I would close with saying, sometimes you don't want to go with the lowest bidder. You need to look at the experience, the track record, their collection history. And just because somebody proposes one or two points below, be very careful, because these tax revenues, I can tell you as a mayor, we count, we budget on tax revenues, and if somebody falls short, it's going to hurt the county and it's going to hurt the people that you represent. So I thank you very much for your consideration. Again, I just want to comment and congratulate, this is a beautiful meeting facility, and Spurs 26, Utah 24, end of the first period.
Just wondering about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, that doesn't mean that I'm going to accept it. The others didn't do it.
Before you all get all set up, let me just kind of give you a little heads up of how we're going to try to do this. Every member of the court has received your proposal, had the opportunity to look at it. You're going to have about two minutes to make an opening statement about your firm, introduce your firm to the court, and then we have about 10 or 11 questions that have been asked of everyone. And we'll ask those questions. At the end of that process, you'll have about two or three minutes to kind of wrap it up and close, okay?
Thank you, Judge. With those parameters, I'll begin then if it's okay with you and the members of the court.
Go for it.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rodriguez, and I am the senior partner at the law firm of Rodriguez and Nicholas. In association with McCrery, Vasilka, Bragg, and Allen out of Austin, we have submitted the proposal that I need, and I need to correct a small misconception that I think occurred last week at last meeting. It was initially indicated that the firm who was ranked number one was from Austin. And it is true, they are from Austin, but what was left out of the identification was the fact that Rodriguez and Nicholas is a local law firm, and we have made a joint proposal, a proposal in association with McCrery, Vasilka, Bragg, and Allen. So again, my name is Michael Rodriguez. I have with me here Harvey Allen, Mario Trevino, my partner Henry Nicholas, Shelley Vasilka, and Ivy Arroyo. And we'll be happy to entertain any questions that you all may have at this time.
All right. How many clients does your firm currently collect taxes for in South Texas?
The South Texas area...
The Valley.
Sir?
The Valley.
The Valley.
Rio Grande Valley.
Our firm has not had a practice in the Valley area, Judge, which is one of the reasons that we wanted very much to try to represent this county as a way to get into this part of the county. Our firm has been in existence, as our proposal says, since 1961, and we have numerous clients all across the state, from far west Texas to east Texas, et cetera. We just have never had any business down in this part of the state. Well, I mean, when you say South Texas, you said the Valley.
The Valley.
Yeah.
Unless you consider another part of South Texas.
Well, you know, Jim Hall County.
That's close enough.
Yeah.
Are you willing to negotiate your rate any further from what you presented in the proposal? And that's just a yes or no question?
No, sir.
How soon would you be able to start operating in Cameron County?
I'd like to answer that. I'd like to... Judge, members of the commission, we are ready to ramp up and begin operations as soon as we have the opportunity to be awarded this contract. We tentatively have an agreement in place to have an office. We will have seven, excuse me, eight lawyers assigned to this client. Myself and my partner Henry Nicholas, Mr. Allen, who has over 25 years' experience in collecting delinquent taxes, Mr. Vasilka, who has over 35 years' experience in collecting delinquent taxes, another attorney by the name of Javier Gutierrez, who is not here with us tonight, our associate, Ally Colvin, who has collected for other clients not taxes, but we've had other collection matters, as well as one full-time attorney in the joint MVBA Rodriguez and Nicholas office, who will be dedicated to doing... MVBA Rodriguez and Nicholas office, who will be dedicated to doing only the work of this county. Additionally, we'll have a number of paralegals and support staff, and importantly, I would like to point out, we also have plans to have a full-time employee in the county tax office. That employee will be paid by our firms, and will be assisting the county tax office in the collections of delinquent taxes in the county tax office, which will also help to alleviate the burden that the tax office has right now with respect to those delinquent taxes. But to specifically answer your question, we are ready to go as soon as we're given the word.
Okay. What type of support staff, infrastructure, and coordination would you provide to the county? I think you've already answered that. Describe your project team's experience implementing a delinquent tax attorney program. What individuals within your team have specific experience with delinquent tax collections?
On the team, well, myself, again, Judge, I have 25 years of experience in collecting delinquent property taxes. Javier Gutierrez has 12 and a half years of experience in collecting delinquent property taxes. Michael Reed is going to be bankruptcy specialist, who will handle all the bankruptcy claims. He's board certified in bankruptcy law. He is based out of our Round Rock office. Our bankruptcy claims will be based out of there, and he will represent the county in the Southern District of Texas in bankruptcy court. The other individuals involved, we were going to, as Michael says, will be employing a full-time attorney here in Brownsville, for the sole purpose of working here in Cameron County. Will have no other responsibilities except here in Cameron County. Henry, Michael will be assisting, as well as their associate, in all these projects. They will be backed up by a substantial paralegal staff, as well as support staff, and again, as Michael also mentioned, a person that will be employed full-time in the county tax office.
If I could also put a bit of a finer point on that, Your Honor, just so that you know, my law firm specializes in commercial litigation and products liability defense work. We do litigation. So when there's litigation needs with respect to the collections of these delinquent property taxes, we will be heavily involved in that. That's our role in this firm. We are litigation specialists, and that's what we do. And if I might address a question that Commissioner Benavides had last week, I have been practicing law my entire career, which is 12 years here in Cameron County, in private practice. When I wasn't in private practice in Cameron County, I was serving as a general counsel to a Texas Senate Committee, and I was also working for the Department of Justice as an Assistant United States Attorney. But other than that, Commissioner, my practice has been exclusively here in Cameron County for the past 12 years.
Mr. Rodriguez, I know that I worked alongside with you at the federal level. I was referring to the actual McCrory firm, not specifically at you.
Yes, ma'am, and I just wanted to make sure that I did put that on the record too, so I could answer your question. Thank you.
What levels of responsibility, authority would key staff members be assigned, and at what point would principals become involved?
One thing that differentiates our firm, Judge, from many other firms, is that I, Harvey Allen, Shelley Vaselka, actually have hands-on responsibility for the clients that we serve. That is a distinction that really separates us apart from the other firms. I myself am responsible and directly oversee several of our largest clients as the Shelley. I make a commitment to this court and to this county that if you choose us, you will see me, Harvey Allen, named partner McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen, here overseeing this work. In addition thereto, again, as I've said, Javier Gutierrez, with 12 and a half years' of experience in collecting delinquent taxes with our firm, will also be down here, and he will be down here, I'm making with you, between he and myself, we will be down here in this office at least two weeks out of three to supervise this project. You have a 25-year experience partner, you have a 12 and a half-year experience associate with McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen. In addition to that, we will be sitting there and training the full-time Cameron County attorney, who will be dedicated to this, to doing the work our way. We also have our other staff that will come in to train our paralegals. We will have a paralegal with some 25 years of experience will be down here working with the paralegals and explaining to them exactly how we go through all of our title research, our skip tracing, and instructing them as to the more detailed efforts that go into making a successful collection program.
If I might add also, Judge, we're principals in this association as well, and so as the two local attorneys here, the two partners and principals in our firm, we're going to be available to this court, and we make a commitment to be available to this court, any commissioner, at any time. We'll make regular checks with you all, no matter what. That's the level of service we provide to all of our clients, but upon receipt of any phone call at any time, we will be available and for you, for any needs that you may have.
Well, I might add, just to interrupt, but everyone says that, in our proposal, you will see letters from several of our clients attesting to exactly what I'm talking about, the fact that they see the partners, they see the folks who are in charge, and we are in fact in charge and are administering the program.
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
I'm sorry, Judge, will you repeat that question?
Cameron County anticipates that your effort on collection of delinquent taxes will involve similar activities in other areas of the state. How will your team's resources allow you to respond to our needs?
Actually, very, we are going to essentially, well, we're going to open an office here, staff it completely, and so Cameron County will have its own standalone McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen office, with all the capabilities here in Brownsville that the numerous other offices that we have across the state have. We have offices in Waco, Longview, Denton, San Angelo, College Station, all of which are standalone offices, and this office here in Brownsville will have exactly the same capability, frankly, that our main office does in Round Rock. Again, we realize that the commitment that we're making to you, we want to meet and exceed your expectations. In order to do that, we have to properly staff that. We understand that. And so we are making a commitment to you that we are going to do whatever needed to put the appropriate staff, the appropriate resources and assets into this that is going to ensure that we not only meet, but exceed your expectations.
What efforts and strategies would you employ that would assure Cameron County that you will make every effort to aggressively collect and still provide the customer services needed to support your collection efforts?
Well, without repeating myself on previous answers, and I feel like I'm doing that to some extent, Judge, and I apologize, I think that our firm is unique in the way it approaches both our clients and the delinquent property owners that we are collecting from. First of all, with regard to client services, communication, developing a true attorney-client relationship with the tax office and county officials, county administrators, is very, very important to us. As required by the RFP, we are going to make written reports to the county, to the administration, and in fact, plan on meeting with them on a weekly, if not daily, basis in order to try to establish a rapport, a confidence, and so they will have confidence in our judgment, and we'll make suggestions as to how to address specific issues. With regard to the delinquent property owner for whom we're collecting, no one likes to pay taxes, but one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is the ability to deal with property owners of limited financial means. In dealing with property owners of limited financial means, we treat them as individuals, we treat them with respect and dignity. They are criminals, they just owe tax. What we want to do is work with them. We want to reorder their priorities. We want to identify discretionary spending that they have, that they're engaged in, that they could use that to pay taxes on. First thing we do is we identify those areas that we, I refer to as the necessities of life, that everybody has to provide for their families, food, shelter, clothing, transportation, medical needs, et cetera. Everyone has that, everyone needs that, everyone deserves those things. But virtually in every case I run into, there are areas, as we talk to individuals, that they could in fact eliminate some discretionary spending and pay those on taxes. And what we try to do is make sure that they understand that after paying the basic necessities of life, that paying, there's nothing more important than paying your taxes, because once you get your taxes caught up, now you have more discretionary income, and you can move on to other things you'd like to do. So those are the two big things that we offer to the county in terms of communication and to the property owner. One other thing I would like to emphasize, Judge, is that we really plan, and we really are, I should say, going to emphasize collection of delinquent business personal property taxes. It's my understanding, frankly, that the county, as well as the other taxing jurisdictions in Cameron County, have lost a significant sum of business personal property taxes because of statute of limitations, effective collection techniques not being taken on a timely basis, or not simply taken at all. Our proposal says that we are going to begin collecting delinquent personal property taxes on April 1st of each year, not July 1st. So we have a 90-day advance to get out there. Personal property taxes are the most difficult taxes to collect, and we want to make sure that we are out there on April 1st collecting those taxes for you. We will also make sure that we are out there looking and paying very close attention to those businesses that might be in the process of closing, because obviously, once the business closes and their assets are gone, particularly if they're doing business in the form of corporation or limited liability company, there's nothing to collect from. So we're not only going to be out there looking to make sure that those businesses are paying their taxes, if they look like they're closing, we're going to be doing tax warrants, and not only will we be collecting delinquent taxes, we'll be collecting the current taxes that are due to the county at the same time.
What unique or innovative methods, procedures, and/or approaches would your team bring and implement on this project?
One I just outlined, which was the emphasis on the personal property taxes and collecting those on a very timely basis. The other thing I'd like to say is that we will institute a process whereby that we resell those properties that go in trust. The court may be aware, you put properties up for sale, sometimes they sell, sometimes they don't. If they don't sell, they're taken in trust. We have a very systematic effort, or system, I should say, to resell those properties. They are listed on our website. We go out on the courthouse steps and resell those at public auction after each sale, and get those back on the court, on the county's tax roll, producing revenue for you. Between the personal property taxes collections and the resale of personal property, the, what I'll call the individual prioritization approach to the payout agreements, which again, I don't really think has been done. Those three things, Judge, are three unique things that I think that we bring to this project and will be of great benefit to the county.
Is your firm strictly a tax collection firm? And this requires a yes or no answer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauza has a question.
I wouldn't, I'd be a part of the judge, I need to clarify that, I suppose. McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen is a tax collection firm. Obviously, Rodriguez and Nicholas engage in other efforts besides that.
How involved will the firm get in county politics?
Do you want to?
How involved do you anticipate getting in county politics?
County politics?
County politics, which is...
McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen, well, I stand before you today because this is not an apolitical process. By its very nature, it's a political process. However, we don't ever expect anybody to vote for us, hire us, retain us, evaluate our performance based upon whatever we might do in a political realm. That's not where we are. We rely upon our work. We let our work speak for us. We let the way that we represent you speak for us. We take great pride in the fact that we don't have to rely upon politics to get us hired or to keep us hired, and that's true throughout our practice. People know us to be a firm of integrity, they know us to be a firm, very ethical firm. Not to say that others aren't, or the political process itself is not, but that we try to remain separate and apart from the politics if at all possible, because our job is not a political job. Our job is to treat everyone exactly the same, to maximize taxes, to treat your property owners in a way that you want them treated, and still maximize your revenue. Those things are not political processes. Those are a collection function, and to as great a extent possible ought to remain apolitical.
I would like to add as well, when, I am sure, there's no doubt in my mind, Commissioner, that prior to asking us to go into association with McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen, they did their homework on my law firm. And anybody that knows my law firm knows that we comport ourselves with the highest level of ethics and with the highest level of integrity. It's important, it was passed down to me by my father, who's a 40-year practicing attorney. I believe in it, and that's the way we live our life. That's the way we practice our business. I also want to say, prior to us agreeing to joint venture in association with McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen, we did our due diligence as well, and everything that Mr. Allen just told you is exactly what we found out about his firm as well.
You've got about two minutes to close.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I want to close just briefly, talking about the process that has brought us to the presentation that we have here tonight. I understand and applaud this court's attempts to remove politics from the process by appointing a committee to review the RFPs. In every scenario that was laid out last week by Mr. Sepulveda, in every single one, I believe, the first one he talked about was total score. Our law firms were ranked number one. When he talked about, I believe it was average score, our law firms were ranked number one. And even when the court threw out the scores from the East German judge and the Russian judge, we were still ranked number one. In every single manner in which this court and the committee looked at the evaluation process and the submission of the RFP and the law firms, we were ranked number one. And I think that means something from a process standpoint. And I think it should precipitate a favorable vote for our law firms. I would like to close by saying, it was not at all lost upon us, Judge, that you mentioned last week, that this is the first time this court has gone out for bids for the delinquent tax collections in over 10 years. And I just want to say to all the members of this court, it was a privilege to present to the committee, it was a privilege to present to you here tonight, and it would be an honor for both of our firms, Rodriguez and Nicholas, McCrory-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen, to represent Cameron County in delinquent tax collections, and we'd like every opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, I'm going to bring the Lamborghini firm back in. We have to ask, you guys are gone. You're fine. No, we only have one question that we need to ask, and, no, they can stay. I mean, so everybody can come in if they want. We only have one more question to ask of the Lamborghini firm, or they have to stay out. Okay, good. I mean, legal saying, go ahead and just step out, just to be consistent, okay? So that's fine. It won't take long.
Stay, go.
Commissioner Gauza has one more question that we started asking after you all left, and he will ask that question of you all.
And the question is, how involved would you get in county politics?
How involved would we get in county politics?
Right.
Well, it is necessary for us to deal with every member of every board. We often go to report to them, we get to know them on a personal basis, they get to know us, they ask us questions. We would get involved as involved as anybody else would trying to do a good job for those officials.
And adding to that response, you can also be involved in county politics. We give back a lot to the back a lot to the community through different organizations that different board members or commissioners may endorse. We give back to all the school districts here in Cameron County also, so we're involved in that manner also, civically and community-wise.
Any follow-up questions? Okay, I guess, I hear a motion on item 34 to acknowledge all the presentations. Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 35, discussion and possible action regarding the selection of the delinquent tax collection attorney firm. Commissioner Gatsa, or anybody have a motion?
Well, Judge, I would like to say that I feel that it was definitely the right thing to do, to interview all the firms. I, for one...
Can we wait till everybody sits down since we haven't heard?
I, for one, appreciate the fact that we had these many proposals come before us. Whenever you have competition, obviously, you're going to get better results. I was impressed with all of you, and I don't know if you're ready for a motion, or do you want everyone, others to have a chance to discuss?
Everyone is free to speak.
I'd like to make a comment. I think we're very fortunate to have had four really good presentations, and I do want to apologize for not being here last week. I had a schedule that was done eight weeks before, and I just really couldn't get out of it, so I do appreciate the court delaying it to this week so that I could be here with everyone, and certainly, it was informative to me to sit through the presentations and the questions that each of you answered. I think all of you obviously should be proud of the company you work for, the work you do, and I know that whomever we select is going to do a good job for the county. Looking forward to it.
Commissioner Benavides?
I would like to say something in reference to, I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Billy Jacob.
I'm sorry. Mr. Jacobs, I appreciate the fact that you came before us and let us know how you feel. Being a new member of a community, it is important that you get involved. Now, as to your reference to the recommendation not being followed, just the mere fact that the numbers were skewed, okay, and then for this body to take the recommendation after we acknowledged that they were skewed, that is why I pushed the effort of bringing every firm back. Now, in the end result, it may be that the people with scores the highest may be the ones that are selected, but at least everybody had a fair chance at coming forth. I know that the firm from Linebarger has been with us for a long, long time, and to say, I mean, it's not their fault that the bids were not put out 10 years ago, four years ago, whenever, you know, for whatever reason it was, it stayed that way, okay, now we've brought it out, and I just wanted everything to be on top of the table, okay, and that's, I appreciate all of you coming forth and presenting it, and I think it was a better, I took your proposals home this weekend, and they were long and detailed, and I think I got a better view of everything, so thank you very much for coming before us.
Commissioner Gatsa?
My decision last week to do what we did was to move the process forward, with all due respect to the two commissioners that were not here, not the intent to exclude anyone, it just needed to be moved forward. With that being said, I think that what we need to do tonight is to narrow down these folks and bring them back, whoever we decide to bring back next week for final determination, and with that being said, I would move that we would bring back next week Purdue, Brendan, Fielder, Collins, you know, the, let's see, Purdue, Brendan, and McCreary and Valeska, Bragg, and Allen for another...
I'm sorry, could you, I think you kind of intermixed everything. What was that again?
I would like to move that we bring back two firms, McCreary, Valeska, Bragg, and Allen, and Purdue, Brendan, Field, Collins, and Morton for a subsequent interview next week, if this court wishes, or make a decision at that time. That would be my motion.
Okay, I have a motion to narrow the field down from four to two, bringing back the McCreary firm and the Purdue firm for a final interview next Tuesday. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Well, I'll second it just to flush everybody out. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, that's two to three, all right. Do I have another motion?
I have a motion, and I want to say that, again, I will repeat the fact that I'm glad we had the opportunity to interview all of them, but after hearing, the bug stops with us when it comes to making a decision, and I am ready to make a motion to go ahead and choose McCreary, Vasselka, Bragg, and Allen in association with Rodriguez and Nicholas. And I applaud the committee for their work, and after hearing the interviews myself, I agree, and that's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion to award the contract to the firm of McCreary and others. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, let's do it again. Do I have another motion?
I knew this was going to happen.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to retain the firm of Pena, Sparsa, and Garza.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. One more time. Do I have another motion?
I'll make a motion to, if that one's not going to work, to retain Linebarger.
Do I have a motion to award the contract to the Linebarger firm? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Commissioner?
I voted, I voted yes.
Okay. Did you vote yes?
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay. The award goes to Linebarger on a three to two vote. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, signed by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Judge, I have one more thing to say, please. I'd like to thank the law firms that respected the court and did not contact me. I felt that those that did not contact me showed a lot of professionalism, and that's at the top of my list when it comes to choosing someone.
All in favor, signify by saying aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Got to say this, Honorable Court.